Don't you love Dewan? Don't you love you some Dewan?
I'm glad you're here. How's it going, all right? How are you? That's all we're doing, right? Is there a place that we can plug in for sound?
Unfortunately, I apologize.
I don't blame you.
I know, I'm just going through.
I didn't build the building.
Recall today's council meeting to order. I'm asking if anyone has any special intentions today?
I got it.
Thank you, Council President. I actually have two, and I'd like to start with first. Former city attorney, court, city court magistrate Judge George Jacoby passed away this past weekend and of some illness, cancer. But, you know, George was a very wonderful employee of our city for many years and certainly was well missed after he left us and went to Jefferson Parish as First Parish Court Judge. So please keep his wife Gail and your family and your prayers for George. The second was not an employee of the city of Kenner per se, but he was the State Police Troop B commander for about eight years, Mel Ryan, and he passed away this weekend also. So just for our law enforcement friends and the state police, I want to have our prayers for Mel and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Segura. I'd like to ask for the Ed Kofi from Our Lady of Perpetual. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Zahn?
I just want to keep the Robinson family in our prayers. As we know, a landmark in the city of Kenner had a fire this past Saturday. We have many fires in the city, but I know this is a landmark that most of us go to. I know Councilman Segura has been very close to the family. I know a lot of us have been very close to the family. Nobody got hurt, but just keep them in our prayers because it is during the Lent season, and I know they want to get up and running. And just it was a, it's a landmark that everyone, it's been all over Facebook, and I just think we need to keep them in our prayers that they get back on business as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn. For the Ed from Our Lady of Perpetual Health Catholic Church, please lead us in prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty God, Creator of the universe, we thank you for the gift of this beautiful and peaceful land, the city of Kenner. We thank you for the life of the people you have chosen to be leaders of this city. We thank you again for this beautiful day you have made. Lord God, as this council meets this afternoon to deliberate on the common good of this city and her inhabitants, we pray to invite you that your presence may be felt in this hall. Give wisdom and intelligence of your Holy Spirit to these council members, the mayor and his officers, so that they will have a fruitful meeting. Bless their efforts and reward their commitment and dedication to this city. May your blessings come on this city of Kenner and on the states of Louisiana and on the whole of this nation. We ask that our brothers and sisters who have gone before us may find a restful place in your kingdom. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen.
I would like to have the Boy Scout troop 269, please come up and lead us in the pledge at this mic right in the front.
Please join us in the Pledge of Leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum this evening. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B 14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of February 21st, 2020. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Correspondence reports from the May.
Through my comments, we'll have two people come up to do some talks on some of the things going on in the city of Kenner, but I will go through some things first. Sales tax revenue again for February is up almost 6% over the same time as last, as the same month this time last year, with the current fiscal year up 6% over this time last year for the full year. That's impressive numbers. I like the way that keeps climbing every month, and of course, that has to do a lot with our economic development. Talk about the parade. Of course, the parade was two Saturdays ago. What an excellent event for the city of Kenner. They're estimating anywhere around probably 80,000 to 85,000 people on the streets of Kenner. We have contacted a few of the businesses along the route and also businesses throughout the city of Kenner, and they are telling us, and we will have a better report for you as time goes on, but they're telling us that they saw a spike in their sales. Some of the little, you know, convenience stores on the route, gas stations, little restaurants, saw a difference in that Saturday night. So I want to thank a few people, though. This would not have been possible without a good bit of departments, starting with the Kenner Police Department. The Kenner Police Department did an excellent job that night. I saw the police officers out by the site. I was very happy with what they were doing. I know a couple of us were there, Councilman Wilmot, Councilman Brennan, Councilman McKinney was there, but she was getting on the floats and stuff, but she took a few pictures with us. I know Councilman Segura was there. Excellent event. I know Councilman Carroll came to the stands. All of you all came to the stands. What a great event put on by keeping us safe by the Kenner Police Department and also our Kenner Fire Department. Our Departments of General Services, Parkways, and also Public Works did a great job. But special thanks goes out to Mark Loriozo, Jimmy Dennis, and Lee Russell, and Chad Pittfield. Those, those people, I tell you what, without them doing what they did, it wouldn't make us all look good, and it wouldn't give the people of Kenner what they deserve. So my deputy CEO, my Director of Recreation with all my staff, I mean, there's lots of staff, but the people that stand out in my mind are those ones that I named individually besides those departments. So, great job. A lot of support from the parish also. I mean, when the parish president shows up at a parade in the city of Kenner for the first time, I'm impressed. And Cynthia is a good friend. She's a friend of all of ours. She's absolutely a friend of the city of Kenner, along with the parish councilwoman from that district where the parades happen. Jennifer Van Rankin took time to come out there, and actually, we made them part of the program. So I don't know if you saw that, Councilman McKinney, because you weren't there for all the toasting as you were part of the parade, but they actually took part in the parade. So the toasting, the proclamations, the whole welcoming, the captain, the king, and the queen. Again, thanks to everyone who had something to do with it, and we look forward to doing this next year. Code sweeps. We did a code sweep this past week in District Five with the help of Councilman Brennan's office. 100, 200 blocks of John Hopkins and Carney Word, violations were 16, warning violations were 12, court summons were one. Not very bad numbers, very happy with that. Code Enforcement's doing a great job with that. We also have with us tonight to do two talks. I want to say thank you to the Kenner Fire Department under the leadership of Terrence Morris for what he has done, getting that temporary fire station up and running. I think it's been there since the 21st of February, right around the time of the parade, and it is absolutely covering that area. So if we could call Terrence up, and I also want to thank Ryan Bergeron and all the, all the fire personnel of the Fire Department for doing what they do. If, is Terrence here?
No, Charlie is.
Sorry. Charlie Hudson is here. I'm sorry about that. Charlie is in third-in-command. He's going to come up and give a little overview of what's going on. And then I need one more person to come up. Councilman.
Okay.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as the mayor stated, as of February 21st, Fire Station 38 now has temporary quarters on 325 Duke Drive. We have one station, one, one truck there, the same amount of trucks that we had at the original station, Engine Three at Eight. We have approximately four to five guys, depending on scheduling, on that truck on a daily basis, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So now that, that area is fully covered, as the mayor stated, and we're ready to respond in that area as quickly as possible. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have two more, I apologize. But first, I'm going to call up Ms. Heather Hilliard, who has been very instrumental in getting our CRS rating to a six, raised to a six. And I don't know if y'all know what that means, and for the public to know, that will reduce our flood insurance costs. So I want to thank her, and I also want to thank again, which I know she's going to do, of course, all people involved, Molly McGinnis, along with Heather, for what they've done, but also Parish President Cynthia Lee Shane, because she will go into detail on how helpful Cynthia was on this also. As I said, she's a very good friend of the city of Kenner. Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council President. Want to tell you that this is the update from the October meeting, when we discussed, we had submitted these things. We were waiting for FEMA to give us the, the results, and congratulations, we have improved in our mitigation and our education, and it's through the work, as the mayor said, of a lot of people. The Code Department with James Mohammed, Molly McGinnis, who I'll call up too. We kind of tag teamed and went different directions, trying to do education, permitting, inspections, database management, all of these different things that FEMA requests on a cycle basis. Some of the things that we improved were our mapping information. We showed you how you can go online and look at historical flood maps, get your elevation certificates, look up answers to permitting questions and things of that nature. So we posted the announcement today. We are waiting for that final stamp. It goes into effect October 1st or immediately thereafter. The city will be sending letters to the insurance agents, similar to the Class One Fire Rating, where people are more than happy to tell their insurance agent for flood insurance, hey, we've got a Class Six. Goes down for 20% in AE flood zone, majority of that's in North Kenner, X in the South Kenner gets 10%. Residents and businesses, it applies to everybody with eligible flood insurance. Molly, do you want to say some of the things that we did together and on the code side with the data and BSAGs? And we really built, there she is. Tomethia started this. She was hiding earlier, and I knew I'd find her. Tomethia started this in 2012, did our first BSAGs with PIAL, which also does fire, so there's some crossover on things we do. Handled it before Jefferson Parish did theirs, set a great foundation, and we actually went up more than 500 points in our review. But Molly can explain more of Munis and what goes on in that system, too.
A little bit, just a little bit. Actually, more, it's just, Kenner's extremely lucky. We have four certified floodplain managers in the city. I think that's more than most areas have. We have Ms. Heather Hilliard, she's a certified floodplain manager. James Mohammed, Director of Code Enforcement, is a floodplain manager. I am, as well as Jamie Shorke, our Landscape Plan Reviewer, with them, our permitting staff, our plan review staff, our administrative staff, Dana, don't hide. These people all chipped in. They found areas where we could improve. They found places where we were maybe getting lazy and putting information in over the years. All of these things, we're already implementing improvements in, we're already seeing the improvements in the reports we're printing out, and we're striving for better numbers next year. And this woman's tenacity and dedication, that's what did this. And teamwork, and we are all very Kenner proud.
Yes, yes. So want to thank Code, Public Works as well, and I'm going to give you a little information. So forgive me while I look at my notes to make sure I've got the right dollars. Daniel over short, onto Williams. You know that part that floods a lot? It just stands because it takes too long to pump. We already have that money, but FEMA has to say, go ahead and spend it. So we're waiting on that, sir. We have submitted for $8.2 million in Lincoln Manor and South University and by request of the state. They said, can you submit for this also under another project, under HUD money, because that's a CDBG area? So another 8.2 million. We have submitted for Pump to the River for South Kenner in two locations. All of this is to make Kenner better. It improves, that's great, the flood rating and mitigation, but it's to help make businesses and residents happy. I will continue to ask when the notice is coming, so that we have continued improvements that Mayor Zahn has encouraged us to do these innovations for you. Any questions about flood insurance, the discounts that we discussed last time, the different flood zones?
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. That is very good news. Thank you for all your hard work, your department and your colleagues. Just watching you with your animated speaking, it just makes me think, were you ever in the weather, or like you were a meteorologist on TV or anything?
So on this chart over here with the front coming in, you're going to have a beautiful weekend. I think that email was sent out earlier today. Yeah, there's a little bit of, you know, Italian and German, and I can't stand here and not move my hands.
In case Margaret Dora ever decides she wants to retire, it's just a thought.
If that opportunity presented, I think I'd discuss that with the mayor first, because I'm having a bit too much fun helping right here. You're welcome.
Mayor Zahn? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank you ladies for the information that we got in. I'd also like to just put into perspective the, some of the information, particularly about the drainage. I live, and many of the people who I represent live in District One, even though we live on the highest part of the city, there are still pockets, as you address, around Williams Boulevard that has a tendency to hold standing water. What about the possibility of applying for a grant? Now, you realize that you have individuals from all over the country that go to these conferences, and a bunch of people applied for it. We were one of the few that made the cut list, and we were the final person to get it. The director at that time was Ms. Alita Tyrell. She did a fantastic job of getting this for us, and this will alleviate a lot of the issues that we were having along the way. Also, between our conversations with Ms. Fossey about within the Pollock area, that also experiencing some drainage issues, standing water, or water taking forever to go. We're on the high part of the city. I think with this addition to that, it would alleviate, it will alleviate a lot of the, the standing water, but also it will help, the water will go to the river as opposed to going north, which will take off some of the pressure for everyone else north of Airline. So it's a win-win for the entire city. It's good to hear about these incentives that going forward, and we look forward to not only these two, but many more. As you mentioned about the Lincoln Manor, we were kind of disappointed about this not making the cut a few years ago, when, when council, I mean, excuse me, State Representative Wilmot was on board in the state, we were under the impression that we had made the cut, but we, we didn't make the cut. We being the Lincoln Manor subdivision. So it's good to hear we're moving back into that direction, and I'm sure the people in the Lincoln Manor subdivision will be glad to hear that, and I'll be sure to spread that along with them. So again, thank you ladies and the administration, everyone, for your support, and we look forward to moving on forward to helping again. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll.
And Councilman Carroll reminded me that I didn't mention AP Clay down towards that area in Pollock. There is part of that Pump to the River. There's another project as well that I put in for 2.4 million that is enhancing a 100-year-old watershed feature of the city to increase the drainage capacity over there as well. And I forgot to mention that earlier.
Okay, and you're waiting for this, for, so you?
And this, the, that grant is for the state.
The state, and?
The other, the Lincoln Manor, I applied to both, and I will not get both. When I get one, the other one negates.
Got you.
But they requested that I apply, the state did, specifically for Lincoln Manor, and used all the work that we did for the FEMA grant.
Okay, well, I'll leave that up to you guys to determine. Don't ask me to pick between the Pollock area and Lincoln Manor.
Oh, no. I'm applying for it all. I apply for it all.
Yeah, but we only could get one.
No, in this case, you, you could.
You could get two?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, then, we're getting both of them then.
I don't choose. I, I apply for all the money for you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor Zahn?
Yes, so the last thing is, we've been, you know, obviously talking about the coronavirus on the administration level. Doug Dot is here tonight, and we've gotten some questions. So Doug Dot is here tonight. He has informed us and the executive staff meeting on Monday what he's doing. He informed us in the agenda meeting yesterday for the administration, but obviously, we need to inform the city of Kenner residents and, of course, the city, the Kenner City Council and our Chief of Police and our Fire Chiefs of what we're doing. So Doug Dot is here from Emergency Management to give an overview of where we are and what we're doing to prevent any kind of outbreak here. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this is part of our job in Emergency Management is to coordinate the activities of the various city departments and to provide public information when we have that information concerning situations that impact our local community. This is nothing new for us, and we do this on a continual basis. This is not our first rodeo with a, a public health issue. We've dealt with them before. We deal with issues on a continual basis and coordinate closely with our federal, state, and regional partners, Parish, GOSEP, Governor's Offices of Homeland Security and Preparedness, Louisiana Department of Health, our local ports, including the Coast Guard, and other agencies throughout the state and throughout the country. We receive information on a continual basis, and we coordinate very closely with the Kenner Police Department, Chief Glazer and his staff, as well as Chief Morris with the Fire Department, and our EMS people as well. So we're all on the same page. We coordinate, talk amongst ourselves, and exchange data and information, and assist each other in our continuity plans and our contingency plans. With respect to our continuity plans, this is something that we implement on an annual basis during the flood, during the flu season. So this is something that we've been practicing for a long time, and it's, it's part of our normal process throughout the year. In doing that, we met with the directors a few days ago and gave them a very detailed briefing on the information that we had about coronavirus to date, and we implemented some internal controls in, in preparation for if anything occurs here locally. We have not had any reports of any activity here locally. And in the state, it's also no local cases, no cases in the state as of yet. There are people who obviously are self-quarantining and being assessed for the virus. This is something that's normal during these type of health situations, and because coronavirus is a naturally occurring event, you're going to see cases in Louisiana at some point in the future. It's bound to happen. One of the things we're doing is encouraging our city employees for continuity purposes to take certain preventive measures. One of the most important being common sense, wash your hands, wipe down the surfaces around your business and your home, and to also, you know, distance, social distance to a certain point, if you see someone who's ill or if you are ill, to take reasonable precautions not to be infected or to infect others with whether it's the flu or this coronavirus. Important thing to remember is that the coronavirus is far less contagious as, right now, than the flu is. The flu is extremely impacting our United States to a large extent, and so it's important to understand the, the, the fact that the flu is much more of a serious issue for us than the coronavirus right now. We want to encourage our citizens also to rely on validated, reliable health and safety information, and the best source of that information is our public health services, our CDC, and our state Louisiana Department of Health, and our Office of Public Health here in the, in the region. These are the people who are trained and experienced in dealing with these types of These are the people who are trained and experienced in dealing with these types of matters, and they coordinate with us very well and provide us the information and the resources that we need to deal with these issues. So in the event that we have something, we are taking all reasonable precautions at this time. We're reviewing our continuity plans and our contingency plans in the event that we need to step up the game a little bit, and at this point, that's where we stand. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug.
That's it, councilman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That will conclude the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember McKenna, second by Councilman Wilmot, on the consent agenda. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to read one of the council rules out to the public before we start on the public appearance agenda. I would like to remind the public, if there's a topic on the agenda that calls for a lot of debate, that there is a council rule 15.4 that references, on any matter either before the full council or a committee thereof, no more than five persons on each side of the question shall be heard, and each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. So just to remind the public of that rule before we proceed with the public appearance agenda. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings for final passage. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding resolution number B 17074, a resolution calling a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 2831 Fayette Street in Kenner, Louisiana shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilmember Brennan, to open the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
I would like to have Director James Mohammed address us.
Good afternoon, council. The structure in question is an elevated structure on Powell Asters bearing a municipal address of 2831 Fayette Street. The property is owned by Alfonso Villa Ferrera. On July the 22nd of 2019, I visited the site, and I found it unsafe under the building codes of the City of Kenner, section 5-57 of the City of Kenner Code of Ordinances. On September 26, 2019, a notice was sent out via certified mail to the property owners advising them of the building violations. After the certified mail was returned unclaimed and bearing, not being able to locate the property owner, a curator was appointed by the city. The violation still exists at this time. As of the day, as of today, there is currently an amount of 17,000 owed to the City of Kenner for taxes and grass liens. The City of Kenner also contacted the services of an engineer, and it is noted in the report by the engineer retained by the City of Kenner that the utilities are disconnected, the grass is overgrown throughout the property, portions of the structure overgrown with vegetation, sections of the siding are missing in the rear of the structure. The bottom plate of the exterior wall is completely gone. Based on the report of the engineer, the structure is a serious public hazard, and we recommend the city take the necessary steps to declare a public nuisance and have it abated by demolition. That ends the, oh, and we do have a curator here, but that ends my presentation. Thank you. And we have Mr. Keith Conley here to speak on this.
Mr. Conley?
This administration, on December 11th, 2019, is data, I've gotten no results, no, nobody has come forward. I did run an ad in a legal journal for the City of Kenner, ran February 12th and February 14th. Again, I got no response. So at this time, I think that as a curator, I've fulfilled my assignment, and I've exerted my due diligence with no results.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to address us on that, on this property issue? Seeing none, I have a motion from Councilman Carroll, second by Councilman Brennan, to close the public hearing.
Motion passes seven zero.
I have a motion by Councilman Carroll, second by Councilmember Brennan, to approve. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 9B is a public hearing regarding resolution number B 17075, a resolution calling a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 1915 Kansas Avenue, Kenner, Louisiana shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
Have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Hayes, to open the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. James Mohammed?
The structure is an elevated structure on Powell Asters bearing a municipal address of 1915 Kansas. We found this particular structure in one of our code sweeps. The property is owned by Gladys and Duke and Walter Koschko. On August 19th of 2019, it was determined that the property was unsafe and dangerous under the building codes of the City of Kenner, as well as section 5-57. On September of 2019, a notice was sent certified mail to the property owners advising them of the building violations. After the certified mail was returned unclaimed and not able to locate the property owner, a curator was appointed by the City of Kenner. The City of Kenner also contacted the services of an engineer, and it's noted on the report, the utilities are disconnected, major debris in the rear of the property, the entire exterior perimeter of the structure is grown with, overgrown vegetation, sections of the siding are missing, as well as some of the rear wall. Foundation issues in the rear of the structure causing a section of the building to be unsafe, a large Connex container in the rear of the property. The existing shed in the rear of the property has partially collapsed. Based on the report of the engineer, the structure is a serious public hazard, and we recommend that the city take the necessary steps to declare a public nuisance and have it abated by demolition. The structure is beyond repair. We do have a curator here. Again, it is Mr. Keith Conley, and I think we have some residents that want to speak on this particular piece of property as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Mr. Conley?
Again, thank you, Keith Conley, curator for the property, 908 Williams Boulevard. I was appointed as a curator for this property, for the absentee owners, November 25th. Again, I did the same steps the city did, certified mail to anybody with a property interest. Did put an ad in the official journal for the City of Kenner, ran the same two days, February 12th, February 14th. Got no results. I did do a site inspection, speak to the neighbors, gave them my contact information, and this morning I did get a phone call from an attorney, a Mr. Cambry, whose office is at 3604 Clearview. He advised, he does represent one of the absentee owners. I did tell him about the public hearing tonight. He advised that he was going to appear tonight. I asked him to confirm that by an email. He did. I forwarded email to the council, as well as the administration. So I don't know if he's here or not, but based on the efforts he exerted, I feel it did turn up one of the, somebody with a property interest in this.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Please approach. Please state your name and your address.
Charlene Taylor, 1924 Kansas Avenue, Kenner, Louisiana. I have been dealing with calling Councilman Segura's office for a couple of years now regarding this property, on the condition that it's in. I don't think Code has been doing the sweeps like they're supposed to be, where this house should have been demolished years ago. This house has been vacant for over 10 years, if not longer. There are several houses in the area, it's the same condition, and nothing's being done about them. I'm on first-name basis with Tracy from your office. I told him I should be on payroll, because I'm constantly doing the sweeps in the neighborhood. But I just think this is getting, getting to be where it's taking entirely too long for these houses to be demoed, when stuff's never done about this. Even if they not getting, somehow or another, they know what's going on in the neighborhood, where the houses are, the families. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, I'll be more than happy to meet you at any given time. We perform code sweeps on a regular basis in that area. I can assure you, if I'd have got a phone call from you, or my department would have got a phone call from you, we would have been on top of this a long time ago. You're more than welcome to join us on one of our sweeps while we're walking down the streets on Wednesdays, but I can assure you, if I'd have got a phone call from you, we'd have been all over this.
I have been contacting Code several, for years, regarding different things in the neighborhood.
Ma'am, when you finish talking, you cannot come back up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay? Thank you.
I will give you my phone number, ma'am, after the meeting, if you stick around. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to address? Seeing none. Come on up. Please state your name and full address.
A little nervous, first time doing this. Royal Montz, 1916 Kansas Avenue, Kenner. I live right across the street from there, and we was always under the assumption that the nephew had owned it, which the nephew just passed away last week on his 50th birthday. The mom got in touch with me, and she was telling me that she's going to sell all the property. I said, good idea. The gentleman next door, Walter Koschko, I think it was last year, he committed suicide in his front yard next door, so that's probably why nobody can get in touch with this guy. So I think I talked to you, and Linda Koschko got in touch with you.
Yeah.
And I don't know where we're going to stand at. Yeah, that property's been vacant 40 years at least. Should have been demolished a long time ago. But at least maybe give them a chance to do the legal thing, because she lost her son, lost her brother. Maybe they can get a little bit, well, not a little bit of time, this thing should have been done a long time ago. But the mother is going through a great deal of grief right now, so I think they are in a process of taking care of that problem. But yeah, I agree, it should be taken care of, overdue.
Okay.
And also, I'm the one that keeps the grass up, kind of, I don't want it to overgrow, get other critters going around, which they probably have, but I, in the neighborhood, cut the grass, and just trying to make it look decent around, around the block.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Okay. Thanks.
Keith, Mr. Conley?
Yeah, I just, I just want to reassure this council that the attorney this morning did have the client on the phone on a conference call. They were aware of this proceeding tonight. They were put on notice that it started at 5:00, and at this council, we've taken up the issue whether to abate or demolish this property. So I just wanted to be on the record, I think now it's 6:05 or 6:10, and they're not here. But they were made aware, and it was verified in writing, and I've sent that on to, and I'll send it to the city attorney as well.
Okay. Director Mohammed, what input do you have on this? I mean-
What I'd like the council to do tonight is to move forward with the demolition, vote for it. If we hear from them, or they can tell us they're going, or they can provide us with some funds, that they're going to either bring it up to Code, or move forward in the right direction, this department works with everybody. I think you guys get good feedback on what this department does. Unfortunately, we probably didn't know this house was in that bad of shape, because the gentleman just stated to you, he's cutting the grass and he's maintaining it, so we walked by. But I can assure you, if we get a phone call and the lady says, I need a little bit more time, she's going to get it, because that's what we do here. We make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else to speak on this, we have a motion from Councilman Segura, second by Councilman Hayes, to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilman Hayes, to approve it. Please, council members, please vote. Oh, wait. Sorry, Mike. Councilman Segura.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, this property, as you've seen from the pictures, is certainly well past the time for any grace period for remediation. There can be no remediation. The fact that our curator was contacted this morning by an attorney and with a member of the family who said it's in secession, just alerted us that, okay, someone does potentially still own this, and we had hoped that they would be here tonight to see what's happening with the secession. In speaking with Mr. Keith, that it doesn't stop us. The secession can still go on, we can still pass this tonight and let it go through the process. And as our co-director said, we generally do this. It's going to take 30-plus days before any demolition can start anyway, so anywhere in that timeline, if a family member comes and contacts our department, a co-department with some other plan, and say they want to tear it down themselves instead of us doing it, that is an option, but they have to go through his department, post the appropriate permit and whatever he requires to ensure that it gets done. Otherwise, yeah, we will still proceed if my colleagues approve this tonight with me and have it torn down probably within 30 to 60 days. So again, we thank the residents who have been part of getting this to this point, and I do apologize, but these things do get into this legal thing that sometimes takes a while. That's why, you know, we see, we see very few of these on the agenda, but when they do, they are way past time generally. So we will be diligent as we can to get them done faster, but property rights do have, you know, a stronghold in our society. So thank y'all again for, the residents and neighbors for your assistance, and as James said, call him up, take a walk with him. I've done it myself with him on code sweeps and see how they operate. They're, they're, they're good, but then, you know, they're going to be a problem, because someone's going to claim, why are you picking on my property? So, but otherwise, they do do a good job trying to catch these as quick as possible and get them processed. If there are others, and I know y'all have mentioned to my office, we're going to get on them. So thank y'all, and I encourage my colleagues to vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Councilman Segura. I have a motion by Councilman Segura, second by Councilman Hayes, to approve. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 9C is a public hearing regarding resolution number B 17076, a resolution calling a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 410 Taylor Street, Kenner, Louisiana shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilmember Segura, to open the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Director Mohammed?
I promise you, this is the last one tonight. This particular structure, I met with Councilman Carroll Saturday. We had an in-depth conversation about the structure. The structure in question is a pile-supported structure, it's bearing a municipal address of 410 Taylor. On March the 6th, the property sustained major fire damage. The property is owned by Jerome Turner, and September, it was determined that the property was unsafe and dangerous under the building codes of the City of Kenner. On September 26th, a notice was sent out via certified mail to the owners advising them of the property and the building violations. After the certified mail was returned and unclaimed and being unable to locate the property owner, a curator was appointed by the City of Kenner. On October the 7th of 2019, I received an email from Monica from the Jefferson Parish Community Service Department, saying that Jerome Turner was awaiting funding from the VA to fix the property. In November, we asked for an update from Ms. Monica, and she stated that he had an appointment to go to the VA on, in November of 2019. The community service department had spoken with the relatives, and they mentioned to the family they were leaning towards selling the property. She also mentioned it could take up to a year to receive funds. In January of this year, we received an email from Kathleen Newswanger from Southeast Louisiana Legal Services, a veteran attorney who was representing Mr. Jerome Turner on the issues regarding the home. She explained that she was calling around to different veterans organizations to see if any of them could provide financial assistance to him. As of this date, the, none of the violations have been corrected. The City of Kenner also contacted the services of an engineer. An engineer noted on the report that the structure is pile-supported, the utilities have been disconnected, some of the windows and doors are boarded up, and some have steel burglar bars. The recent fire occurred thus causing severe damage throughout the entire structure. Smoke damage has ravaged the interior of the structure. Sections of the roof framing have collapsed towards the middle of the structure. Severe damage has occurred on a number of the wooden members of the roofing structure. Compromising- Severe damage has occurred on a number of the wooden members of the roofing structure, compromising the roof's integrity. Based on a report of the engineer, the structure is a serious public hazard and in immediate danger of collapse. We recommend that the city take the necessary steps to declare it a public nuisance and have it abated by demolition. We do have a curator on site tonight, and I believe we have an attorney as well. But this structure is beyond repair now, and it's been sitting for a year. We've gotten a lot of heat from allowing it to sit there while we're waiting. You know, we did try to work with this gentleman like we always do, but it's time for us to move forward with this one. And if he can, again, if he can come up and provide us some information where he's going to get something done real soon, we'll make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Conley?
Good evening, Council. Keith Conley, 908 Williams Boulevard. I'm the curator for this property. I was assigned this position November 14, 2019. As a result of my duties, I did cause to send out certified mail to anybody that has an interest in the property. The only certified pieces of mail that were picked up were that by Delta Investments, Louisiana Department of Revenue, the Internal Revenue Service, as well as the State Louisiana Division of Administration Office of Community Development. I did cause, and it had to be run for two days, an illegal journal for the City of Kenner. I got no response from that either. I was advised earlier today that somebody had reached out to the Department of Code Enforcement, and it would be present tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Please come up. State your full name and your address, please.
Good evening. Kaitlyn Newswanger. I'm here on behalf of Jerome Turner at 2301 Idaho. I'm from Southeast Louisiana Legal Services. I'm an attorney, and Mr. Turner asked that I speak on his behalf tonight in regards to this property. We have been working with the city. We really appreciate their patience, as Mr. Turner sometimes gets kind of confused with his options and what he would like to decide. So after talking a little bit longer with Mr. Turner and about what his options are, he's agreed to sell the property so that the city does not move forward, and he's not responsible, obviously, to pay for this, and then a lien is subsequently placed on the property. As you probably are aware, Mr. Turner is low-income. My legal aid only is allowed to serve individuals who are low-income, and he has, does not have the money to pay for the demolition at this time. So if the council could consider postponing the demolition for at least sixty days to give Mr. Turner time to find a bidder, like a highest bidder, so that he can sell the property for at least something and divide that amongst his family members. This property is co-owned with his other relatives, that we would appreciate at least sixty days so that he's not at least stuck with the property and the lien, and he's not able to sell the property in the future. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Attorney, for coming up. As Mr. Mohammed said, we did have a conversation on Saturday. We did take a ride to look at it. I also had, I did not have a conversation with Mr. Turner, but Mr. Turner stopped at my house, dropped some information, and there were some information shared with me pertaining to his financial ability to proceed further. Also, as Mr. Mohammed said, a number of residents in the area also were complaining about it. So we have, you know, two different groups looking at it. And the third fact that Mr. Mohammed has said on numerous occasions is that we never want to be able to come in and be the bad guy on this. We want to be able to support, and we always support, the individuals as it relates to their ability to do something. But we also have to do our job as it relates to safety, to the community, air quality, and all of these things. And that has been a number of issues dealing with the air quality for some of the neighbors next door. Through my conversations with Mr. Mohammed, we, I believe, and but I'm going to ask him again, that we had come to a conclusion about how to move forward with this. And we want to always help Mr. Turner and his family. This is, listen, full disclosure, Mr. Turner is from South Kenner. I'm a South Kenner boy. I know Mr. Turner and the family. So there's no secret there. Everybody knows this. There's nothing to hide, and I am not ashamed to say that. But I would like to ask Mr. Mohammed, the attorney asks for sixty days. I would ask for forty-five days, because I believe some time has been already spent trying to come up with a plan. But within forty-five days, which would be enough time for our normal process, plus he's given us another couple, another ten days or whatever it is, to ensure that we have been fair to the neighborhood and to Mr. Turner. So Director Mohammed, I will ask your recommendation and ask for your opinion on giving that time limit before we start the process to demo the property.
Councilman Carroll, as we discussed the other day, you know that the neighbor is very sick, and she's got problems breathing all the smoke. And I think it's going to cause us a little grief, but I'm more than willing to go forty-five days. But on the forty-fifth day, I will have the excavator out there to tear the property down if it's still there. And whoever buys it's not going to be able to rebuild it. It's a non-conforming structure. I believe I discussed with you, it's too close to the property line, and it's got a lot of other issues. So it's going to have to be demoed no matter what.
Yes.
I'll give him forty-five days, but on the forty-fifth day, the excavator's going to be there, because if not, you and I both going to catch some heat.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Mohammed. The attorney, could you come back up? Just so we clear, everybody's on the same page with this, and there's no misunderstanding on this. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you coming up. I appreciate you speaking on behalf of Mr. Turner. And I appreciate the council, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Mohammed, giving us the conditions as it relates to trying to alleviate this situation. I will ask my colleagues to give us that length of time. But, you know, I just want to be sure that you understand, this is what we're going to agree to. We're going to meet in the middle, as opposed to sixty-five days, forty-five days. Forty, but on that forty-fifth day, if nothing has happened, then obviously, we're going to proceed what we need to do. But the biggest thing is to stay in contact, and I would ask Mr. Mohammed to give the attorney your contact information, and I'll give you mine too, to keep us abreast of what's going on, because that's going to be very important going forward.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Turner. I will ask, Madam Clerk, do we have to...
Let's close your hearing, and then we can clarify what your motion is.
I have a motion from Councilman Carroll, second from Councilman Segura, to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
One more? One more vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion passes seven zero to close your hearing.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilman Segura, to approve. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as we fully discussed in front of everyone, the motion on the floor is to amend to give forty-five days to Mr. Turner and his family to come up with a plan to either sell it or to demo the property. And I'm asking my colleagues for the extension to forty-five days. After that, then for us to proceed, for code to proceed and to demo the property. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Council members, please vote.
Yes, sir. Motion passes seven zero.
Item 9D is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,688. An ordinance authorizing a public hearing to approve the proposed amendments to the fiscal years 2017, 2018, and 2019 annual action plans of the City of Kenner Community Development Block grant for the Department of Community Development.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Brannigan, to open a public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
I'd like to ask Timothy Ashaw to address the council.
Good evening, council. This is to amend previous action plans that have been passed by the council when it first was hired. I told you that we may have to move money around to make sure that we're always in compliance with rules. We do have a project that we're working on. It is the Council on Aging where we'll be expending funds. However, that project is just starting, so we have an April 30 deadline. So we're going to move some other projects around and reallocate those funds so that we can meet our deadline timely. So this is what this is trying to achieve. Do you have any questions?
No questions. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. President. Director Attorney, thank you for coming up. And the biggest thing, as we've always wanted to discuss, and to ensure that we are not going to lose funding allocated from the federal government. We never want to do that, and thank you for keeping us on page, on point, I guess I should say, to ensure that. That is being addressed through this report. And you also mentioned the community development building itself. We have until April. Can you go over just a little bit of some of the repairs that's going to be, that's going to happen at that building?
At the Council on Aging building, we're going to do some modernization to the building. However, we are going to do some ADA compliance to bring the building. The building is over fifty years old. There was addition made in 1997, but we still need to take care of that building. That's where we house our seniors for all of our activities. We want to make sure that we give them the best in the City of Kenner. So we are going to be making those changes to the building.
Thank you. And like she said, the building is over fifty years old. Not only do we house the Council of Aging there, they have different benefits there. Through mostly in District One, a lot of people use that for repasses, for parties, for anniversaries. So it is a building well-used by the people in the City of Kenner. So we have to get this building up to par to ensure that the safety aspect, I know it was leaking at one point. There were some concerns about the ADA for the restrooms. So this is going to be a good thing for the entire State of Kenner. And after it's done, Attorney, I would ask for you to come back and tell us, even with some pictures maybe to show us.
After it's done, we'll probably have a rededication of the building, because I think everyone's going to be happy with the changes that we make.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else addressing the council on this issue? Seeing none, we have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember Brannigan, to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Segura did not vote.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember Brannigan, to approve. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. Item 11A is summary ordinance number 12,669. An ordinance amending ordinance number 11,337 adopted October 5, 2017, to delete the definition of short-term rental from Section 1.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Brannigan, to open a public hearing. Council members, please vote. We have a presentation from...
I do not on this.
One more vote, please. Motion passes seven zero.
We had a presentation by Mr. Dufour?
Not today for this case, Council President. It's just removing a definition that was changed when we adopted the short-term rental legislation.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address based on this issue? Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilman Brannigan, to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Brannigan, to approve. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 11B is summary ordinance number 12,670. An ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062 adopted by the City of Kenner on March 17, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, more particularly amending and rezoning Lot 24A Square 223 Briarwood subdivision from R3, 3 and 4 Family Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial and directing, authorizing, empowering the planning directive for the City of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the City of Kenner.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Hayes, to open a public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
We have a presentation for Mr. Wendell Dufour.
I do, Council President, for this case. The property is owned, and the applicant as well, is Mr. James B. Guest, 1932nd Street, Kenner, Louisiana, 70065. Lot 24A fronts 32nd Street and is bounded by Florida Avenue on the east, Delaware Avenue on the west, 33rd Street to the north. The property is currently undeveloped. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property to C1 to allow the development of a small medical office under 5,000 square feet. Lot 25A abuts the subject lots to the east and is zoned C1 Neighborhood Commercial. It's also developed as parking for the commercial center, which fronts on Florida Avenue, excuse me. Lot 22A abuts the subject lot to the west, zoned R3, and developed as the applicant's law office, which is a permitted use in the R3 district. The property is located across 32nd Street or governed by special ordinance and include a hotel and a bank and the Lamarck Ford Motor Company. The 1957 City of Kenner zoning map designated the lot in Square 223 as R1 Single Family. By '72, half of Square 223, fronting Delaware, was zoned to R3, and the remaining side, fronting Florida, was zoned to C1. This zoning has remained in place today. This particular rezoning request is consistent with the Pattern for Progress Future Land Use Plan. That section of 32nd Street is conducive for commercial development. Rezoning at the C1 simply aligns it with the zoning to the property's east. And the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval for this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dufour. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us on this issue? Seeing none. I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Brannigan, to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
A motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Brannigan, to approve. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution authorizing the placement of temporary signs on public property for Kenner Rotary Club.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 13B is a resolution authorizing the placement of temporary signs on Kenner public property advertising the East Jefferson Business Bingo, hosted by the Don Buster's Bingo Committee in conjunction with East Jefferson Business Association.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember McKenney. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,676. An ordinance authorizing the administration to utilize existing Jefferson Parish contract number 55-00018757 with truck and transportation equipment to purchase vehicle bodies and accessories for the city vehicles on an as-needed basis, not to exceed $175,000 annually for the Department of Fleet Management and Public Works.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,677. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Beacon Air Conditioning in the amount of $9,750 to purchase an air conditioning system for the General Store in accordance with telephone bid number T20-2738 for the Department of General Services.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember McKenney. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,678. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Beacon Air Conditioning in the amount of $10,463 to purchase an air conditioning system for the Musburger Lino Gem Office in accordance with telephone bid number T20-2739 for the Department of General Services.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 12,679. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of Taser training cartridges from Axon Enterprise Incorporated, formerly Taser International Incorporated, a sole-source provider in the amount of $6,486 for the Kenner Police Department. for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Brannigan did not vote. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 12,680, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Atletico Incorporated doing business as turf tank in the amount of $42,500 to purchase one field-marking paint turf tank robot in accordance with seal bid number 20-6541 for the Department of Parks and Recreation. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Brannigan did not vote. Item 15F is a summary ordinance number 12,681, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive proposal from Vehicle Parts and Equipment Company Incorporated for the purchase of a Havas prisoner van transport insert, Go Reiner partition inserts, and Havas consoles in the amount of $29,981.20 for the Kenner Police Department.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 12,682, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Dash Lumber and Supply to supply building materials on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number 20-6532 in an amount not to exceed $50,000 annually for the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilmember Hayes. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15H is summary ordinance number 12,683, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12 BOLO wrap 100 less lethal remote restraint devices and accessories from TECO Safety Incorporated, a sole-source distributor, in the amount of $13,938.05 for the Kenner Police Department.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Hayes did not vote. Item 15I is summary ordinance number 12,684, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from SEMCO Incorporated to supply frames and grates on an as-needed basis in accordance with letter bid number 20-1592 in an amount not to exceed $15,000 annually for the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Carroll. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Hayes did not vote. Item 15J is summary ordinance number 12,685, an ordinance revising the not-to-exceed amount authorized in ordinance 11,674, accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Pennant Shop Incorporated to supply flags in accordance with letter bid number 19-1581 from an amount not to exceed $15,000 to an amount not to exceed $29,946 for the Department of General Services.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Hayes did not vote. Item 15K is summary ordinance number 12,686, an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the Chateau Transfer Station Pump Number 3 by Fluid Process and Pumps LLC in the amount of $43,606 for the Department of Waste Water.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Hayes did not vote. Item 15L is summary ordinance number 12,687, an ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with Meyer Engineers LTD regarding the Kenner FEMA Street renovation project to expand the scope of the agreement and increase the not-to-exceed amount by $155,612 for the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15M is summary ordinance number 12,689, an ordinance approving a contract with Ivy Waste LLC for the collection and transportation of garbage and trash, or trash, within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana, for a period of 10 years and providing for related matters.
We have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Brennan. We have an amendment.
Want to entertain the amendment before discussion, or you guys want to talk?
Okay. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I went to a meeting last night at the Jefferson Parish School Board. The meeting was four hours. I would like to ask, I know I came in kind of late, that we are asking to limit five, four, or five against, but by a show of hands, is there, how many people would like to talk on the upcoming legislation?
If, maybe we could have everybody line up on one side and make them line for and against, and then we can see how many we have.
Right. I'd like to put a motion to amend council rules to let everybody speak that would like to speak.
Okay. Well, would you like to let them line up and see how many we have if we have more than five first?
Yeah, let's do that. And...
Anyone wishing to address the council, please line up over here. And it needs to be for and against.
I'd like to remind everybody that there's not supposed to be cell phones in the chambers at this time. All cell phones should be turned off, and they should not be recording what's going on in the council meeting. If you could, please refrain from that.
You want to count and see if we need to?
If I could have two lines, please, for and against. This, on the left will be for. Anybody against? And this? Anybody for on the left? Anybody for the ordinance? Anybody talking in favor of the ordinance? Please come to this, come on this side, please. Please come up here. Okay. This is for, yes, if you could. This is for, this is against. Okay, just stand along. Okay, just stand along.
So I guess we have to put this on the floor.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this time, Councilman Carroll has requested to suspend the council rules to allow the public to speak, more than five people to speak, in favor and against. So I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll. Do I have a second to his motion? I have a second by Councilmember Wilmot to suspend the council rules to allow the public to speak. Councilman Segura has a question.
Councilman Carroll, on your motion, are we still sticking to the three-minute typical timeline?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So at this time, your motion on the floor is to suspend the council rules. Any more discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Councilmembers, please vote to suspend your rules. Motion passes seven zero. At this time, we will be suspending the rules and allowing both parties to speak. Council Chairman, you will decide who speaks for or against first, and then we will go in that order.
Okay, why don't we, let's see, the people that are against the legislation will speak first, the people that are for the legislation will speak second. Can you just back up along that wall and go in that order?
So against will go first?
Against will go first.
Anybody propose against the ordinance? Come forward now.
Against the ordinance. I'd like to pass this out to the council.
Sure, absolutely. You have three minutes. Please state your name.
Please state, please state your name and your address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Robert Remelli, and my address is 901 Industry, Kenner, Louisiana. They're passing out a thing now that we wanted to bring up and show the council that y'all are saying that the contract that y'all are proposing for Ivy Waste is exactly the same as the contract that I bid on and that I'm getting paid for. I'd like for y'all to see what I've put up. And what this shows is that the proposed contract that y'all have for Ivy Waste, y'all are paying them $12.32 a house, which equates to $271,000 a month. Right now, y'all are paying me $11.29 a house, which equates to $248,000 a month. How can this be fair to the residents of Kenner that y'all are raising their prices on garbage by $1.04 a house? Y'all are also stating in the contract that y'all would like that he is going to get $1.90 to pick up the recycling. In my contract, I'm only getting $1 a house. Y'all are going to pay him 90 cents more than I'm getting paid for recycling, plus $1.04 a house more than I'm getting paid to pick up the garbage. How are y'all comparing apples to apples? Y'all saying y'all are terminating my contract because I embarrassed the mayor. I still don't know what I did to embarrass the mayor. Nobody's ever told me what I've done to embarrass the mayor. He said that it was because I didn't do something that I was supposed to do, but I never got a letter to proceed, and it was the Christmas tree issue. We've been putting Christmas trees in the back of garbage trucks ever since the recycle program has come up. So I still, to this day, don't know what I've done that has embarrassed you, Mayor. And I would like an answer. And I don't understand how y'all can give Ivy Waste $1.04 a house more than me. That's not fair to the residents in Kenner. Here again, y'all are doing things behind closed doors. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Mr. President, do you want us to alternate, or you want to hear those in favor first? I mean, those opposed first?
Those opposed first.
Richard Brown, 824 Sessions Lane. I'm opposed to this. First off, I do think Remelli Waste is doing a good job. I realize some people think they're not, but that's not the issue. My issue is, if the city wants to hire a new garbage contractor, there are procedures you can follow to do that. You should wait until this contract is over, or if you're going to terminate for cause, follow the procedures in the contract to terminate it for cause. There are various provisions to terminate it. The contract has several provisions regarding notices to the contractor if he is somehow in breach of the contract, whether it's failure to pick up trash, failure to replace damaged or stolen trash cans. The city is supposed to give notice. Their fines he can pay. If he's in default of the contract, the city's supposed to give notice. He has a right to try to cure the default. None of that has been done. It is my understanding the city of Kenner has never once, in the four years of this contract, sent Remelli Waste a notice of any sort of default. As to the difference in the cost, and I want to hit this before my time is out, first off, the contracts are not identical. I've got both contracts here. They're very similar. They are not identical. Among the differences, the Remelli contract provides for him to replace garbage cans, or they call them carts, the ones with wheels with a lid. It requires him to replace carts, whether they're damaged, lost, stolen, vandalized, at his cost. It's my understanding those replacements come to about $100,000 a year that he is paying. Over the life of the 10-year contract, we're talking about over $1 million that he pays to replace our carts that break or get damaged. Even if his men damage them, he pays the replacements. With the proposed contract you've got for Ivy Waste, Ivy Waste doesn't have to pay for any replacements, no matter what the cause. If your cart is damaged, even if the worker slammed it down on the pavement and the wheels come off, the residents have to pay $65 for a new trash can, $65. And even then, it's not their trash can. It still remains the property of Ivy Waste. Over the life of this 10-year contract, that can amount to about $1 million additional out-of-pocket that the residents pay, because every time you need a new cart, you've got to pay for it. Ivy Waste won't have to pay for it. So we're not, the contracts are not identical. I take it my time is up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Almorella, 4260 East Oil Drive, 5th District, 48 years. I'm opposed to this ordinance, and I'm going to tell you why. I'm going to give you some reasons why. Number one, I'll start out, this is not in the best interest of the citizens of Kenner at all. And I'm going to tell you why. It's about a political operative whose resume was listed in the article this morning in the Times-Picayune Advocate, but they left out a couple of parts of his resume. He was the CAO of this city at one time, and was on a payroll at the parish when the former administration left here. So he's very well-connected. He don't work for Remelli anymore. He left there and went to work for Waste. That's what this is all about. And the article in the paper this morning also stated that he talked. He admitted that he had a little talk with this political operative, and I mentioned his name, Nicky Nicolosi, to try to sway, to try to get, use influence to get this contract back here. Now, first of all, like the speakers before me said, $65 fee to replace a can, a one-time fee, okay? Now, Bob Remelli stated in that article that it will surely wind up in court if this ordinance passes, which is more cost to the taxpayers. Then, Mr. Raphael was quoted as saying, because of the non-exclusive clause in the contract, we can bring in six more solid waste collectors in this city if they want to. But the one thing he failed to mention, the taxpayers have to pay for those six more that they bring in here. So I just gave you some reasons why it's not in the best interest of the people of Kenner at all. So now, I'm going to challenge all seven council members and this administration to give me three reasons and the people in this room why it's in the best, why you think this move is in the best interest, and dispute what I just said, and tell us why you think this move is in the best interest of the citizens of Kenner. And if you can't, guess what? Political payback and political patriotism. You want to know something? That's mostly how all you politicians make your decisions based on those things nowadays, those two things. And as a citizen of this parish and a citizen of this city, I am tired of having to pay for decisions based on our elected officials on political payback and political patriotism. So let's stop all of this foolishness and do the right thing. You're not satisfied with this man? He's got six years left on his contract. When these six years is over with, bring in another contract if you want to. But don't bring down a lawsuit on the citizens of Kenner. We don't need it and we don't want it. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Please state your full name and full address.
Reverend Aubrey Wallace, president of Louisiana Cola Change Political Organization. I'm activist, community activist, 1020 Collins Street, Aurora. I'm very familiar with this company. This man not only employed a lot of people that were convicted, he's been a friend to the community, certainly to the African-American community in a lot of ways, having an open-door policy, assists, a lot of other things. But what is the problem tonight, Mr. Carroll, is that the community is going to bear the brunt of this. The $65 that they're going to have to pay for that trash can, and it's going to be a problem. You can know that someone is going to start stealing trash can because some of the seniors in your district, Ms. Willington, Ms. Carroll, they're going to have to come up with $65 in very, very much right now. It's a difficult time for most people right now. To change a contract that, for the little flaws that they have, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't make sense. And to have someone that worked for this company to all of a sudden work for this company, and all of a sudden this decision come about, it doesn't look good. They say if it look like a duck and walk like a duck, quack, it's a duck. This stinks for the city of Kenner. This is another black eye for the city. Who's next with a contract in the city of Kenner? You terminate this man contract, you're dealing with civil liability, and you could believe one thing, Mr. Mayor, it's going to happen. You know that? Everybody in this room knows that. Who's going to suffer? You, the taxpayers. Go outside and look at those people out there. They go and pick up trash cans 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, don't know if a bomb, don't know if snake, don't know nothing stink, and they're out there working with dedication to keep your city clean. This man been here 15 years, and you can't tell me any company that's been in business for 15 years don't have flaws. To get rid of the contract on the minute things that you're talking about, and then additionally give that much more money to the next contractor, it doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense to you, Mr. Carroll? Does it make sense to you, Mr. Carroll? Mr. Look at you. You guys are sitting up there, ma'am, y'all are sitting up there, you're going to come up for reelection. The decision you make tonight is going to follow you at the poll come election time.
Please state your name, full address for the record.
Stacy Alessandro, 3309 Chateau Boulevard, Kenner. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I was in line to speak, but then I was escorted to the back. Instead, if I didn't put my cellphone away, I'd have to leave the meeting, so I had to come back. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I did put my phone away. See a lot of other people with their cellphones, but anyway, the point I'd like to make is I have been coming up here for 14 years as a critic of Romelli. I have been a thorn in Mr. Romelli's side for the last 14 years. I have been critical of things with the garbage cans, as many other people have, but our complaints, the citizens, have fallen on deaf ears. According to Mr. Romelli, he has never received one single letter from anybody in the city regarding the issues that the citizens have brought up. His contract, which I know from like the back of my hand, calls for extensive fines for missing pickups, for garbage cans not being replaced in a certain amount of days. He's never been fined one single time. And that tells me that nobody has cared about what the citizens have been saying for all of these years. Then, all of a sudden, a political operative from this administration, who was on the Romelli payroll as a paid consultant, suddenly, within the last few weeks, doesn't work for Romelli anymore, so now we're going to change contracts? That is highly offensive to me as a citizen. And this is not the way we do things in Kenner. This man and his company, who I have been up here multiple times against, has multi-millions of dollars invested in this based on the Kenner contract. Now, I know legally you guys might be able to let him keep his contract, but just tell him, "Don't pick anything up," which in essence negates his contract. He's not going to get paid. And that is unfair. If y'all have a problem suddenly, great. Address the problem. Give him a chance to fix it. If he doesn't, he's out. Change contracts. But it's not his fault that nobody did anything. And this is not the way we should be doing this. It's unfair. I think at the very least, you guys should postpone this. Think about it for a few weeks. This is the largest contract the city has. Multi-million dollars. Why, all of a sudden, after 14 years, does this have to be done like that? Is there any good reason? Ask yourself that. There really isn't. It's not an emergency. And look how many people are here that this is affecting. I ask you to please consider very heavily your vote tonight. Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name, excuse me.
Hold on, Ed. What's that? Okay. Everyone that's here now is for this legislation?
I'm impartial.
Okay. Stay in line. Okay. State your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Edward Nesta, 3349 Antoine Watigny Boulevard, Kenner. President of the Canes Brulee Civic Association. The legal, political issues, as reported in the news media, the difference in the contracts, are all very valid, debatable issues. The issue for me today is exactly the same issue I had when the meeting about collection fee increases in recycling was debated. And that is the cost-benefit ratio of increase in the collection fees and the viability of recycling, especially when the cost-benefit ratio is only affecting one, is affecting everyone with only one-third of the people participating. Accountability is almost as important as cost-benefit ratio, and that accountability is almost nonexistent, it may be nonexistent, in the present structure. As I believe it was Ms. Foshee accurately stated, that you can't have a person on every truck, and I agree with that. This situation is a camera on the front of every truck and in the back of every truck. And for 30 minutes, I talked to an observer and a dispatcher, and I asked her to put up everything I wanted to put up, and I knew exactly what was going on at any given moment on any given route that they had. That, to me, is more important than anything else, because that guarantees if I call Councilman Brandigan or one of my residents calls me, and I say, "At 10:10, First Street, at 9:10 this morning, somebody broke their garbage can," they can pull it up in a matter of seconds. That, to me, is the number-one thing going forward. There's no such thing as total accountability, but this is about as good as I think we can get. Thank you.
Please state your name and full address. You have three minutes.
Sharon Agalor, 330 Morey Street in Kenner. I'm here to say that I had the opportunity to visit the facility, and I was very impressed, number one, with the hands-on approach that the owners have with their employees, the technology that they use, and not to repeat exactly what the gentleman said in front of me, but they can see everything that is happening on that route. So if, by any chance, a garbage can is thrown and broken, it's on film. And if anything is damaged, they can go back and trace that particular truck. Also, I was impressed with the fact that they have such a good relationship with their employees. They give incentives, and everybody is geared toward perfection. So I was very impressed with the visit that I made, and I think the company would be an asset to Kenner.
Thank you. Please state your name and full address.
First sure, it's 828 Sessions Lane. Okay, I'm the impartial one. All I can tell you is I wanted to come up here as a citizen and to tell you my observation. I didn't even know this was happening until last week. My garbage pickup, there's been garbage left in the street, and as you all know, I called up Romelli when I had a broken garbage can. Three months went by, didn't hear a damn thing. My elderly neighbors across the street, same thing. We had to call up the mayor's office to get a garbage can. That's unacceptable. I don't know the other players in this. I do know I worked on, in a French Quarter years ago, and I know Mr. Torres came down there and completely did an incredible job. I know what he did after the parade. That, it was like a parade didn't pass. I don't know if there's a third company here, but I'm just here to tell you my observation. If nothing changes, things need to be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and full address for the record.
John Dehaven, 46 Madrid, Kenner. I'm also the president of our civic association. We have 1,200 houses that are eligible. We have two websites that serve our neighborhood, and there's not a day goes by that there's not a complaint about garbage pickup, trash still in the streets, those kind of things. I just, I just think it's time for a change. I had the opportunity to go down and visit Ivy. It is a first-class operation. The people there are vested in what they do. There's 80 employees. They're going to grow. It's a family. They have what they call a war room down there, and I think somebody brought it up about the cameras and the big TVs on the wall. They know where every truck is, every employee, all day long. So if somebody calls in to make a complaint, they're on it. You know, look at what happened with the French Quarter. Look what happened to our parade the other night. You couldn't even tell we had a parade. And that's the things that they're promising to bring to the whole city of Kenner. Their trucks, like somebody said, have cameras on them. So he knows where his people are every moment of the day. We need a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your full name and full address for the...
My name is Tulio Morello. I'm on 4207 Williams Boulevard. And I had the opportunity to visit the facility and was very impressed, as a business owner, that they had the state-of-the-art trucks, technology, to be able to handle a city with our capacity. And I think it's time for a change and for us to move forward with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your full name and full address for the record.
Yes, I'm Pastor Jackie Brown-Cochran, 2610 Decatur Street, of course, in Kenner, Louisiana. Like a few of the other people have mentioned, I had an opportunity to visit, I keep saying, Ivy. I had an opportunity to visit the facility, and I was very impressed. I liked the idea of the morale that's there, the environment, that's very pleasant. The video presentations and guidance.
Pastor, hold on one second. Please be, we cannot have any noise coming from the gallery. Thank you. Go ahead, Pastor.
And I would like to say, when we know more, we make better decisions. There's some things that I've heard here on tonight, and I had a chance to meet the owners there, but there's some things that I've heard here tonight that have really kind of triggered my spirit. Because I can't just go along with things because I got one side of it. I always need to hear both sides. And I know that's probably not what's expected, you know, for me to say right now, but I'm accountable to God first, and I'm going to really abstain from making a decision on here. This is like broken contracts. It's like divorce papers to me. They're very painful. I dealt with two of them. So I hope that things are resolved with whatever is going on, but I really don't feel like I need to be a part of promoting and, or even persuading. I love those people. I just met them the other day, and I love them. And kind of dealing with things that might be personal, personal conflicts. I don't, I don't want to be in the middle of it, but I'm going to be praying about it. I'm going to pray about it. Things, like I say, when you, when you're involved and you hear both sides, sometimes you have to change your mind about things. And I just want to do what I know God is saying in my spirit. And that's, I don't even have words for it. But I want to please God. So I'm just going to say, let's just get it resolved. Personal conflicts, you're not...
Pastor Cochran?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. God bless.
Please state your full name and full address for the council.
Hi, I'm Adam Remyon, 3837 Lake Trail, Kenner, Louisiana. For the record, I'm not going to debate the contract points that have been well-debated here tonight. Ivy's reputation is well-known. For the record, I use other waste services, but Ivy Waste is my preferred waste provider. Why? The forward-looking and leaning tracking and communication platform, not offered by others. And I'm asking this council to weigh all the facts and afford Ivy a fair chance at serving the city of Kenner. Ivy is the future. Any consideration should reflect that you metocracy. I want to thank you for your public service. Quick enough.
No, just half. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Greg Teff, and I'm at 3720 West Loyola Drive. I'm going to post some things here that was said earlier, and if I'm wrong, I want the city attorney to tell me I'm wrong, or if I'm right. First of all, it was said that there is, that we have to pay for every trash can, even if it gets damaged, or if it gets, because they damage it, whoever. My understanding is of the contract, it is not. The only thing that is not covered that I'm aware of is the fact if it is stolen, that may be another charge. But if it is busted by their people, or if it gets broken, those bins have a lifetime warranty, and they're going to be covered by Ivy. Am I not correct? Is that right?
That's correct, Mr. Teff.
The other thing I want to bring up, you know, it doesn't take a genius to figure out, you know, nobody gave Romelli a notice? Come on, let's be real. Every time a councilman calls, or a woman calls, every time an assistant calls, that is, that should be a notice. How can you run a business knowing that City Hall has to call you to get something done because we can't take care of the residents? Come on. That should be notice enough. What are we thinking? The other thing I want to bring up is that, you know, citizens have complained, complained. You look on social media, you see it all over. If we, if, you know, if Mr. Romelli really wanted to take care of it, why didn't he, when he saw all these things on social media, say, "You know, I'm going to fix this"? It didn't happen. Y'all, the city, y'all, council representatives, had to do it. I'm going to leave it at that, because the decision y'all make, you're going to make for the people that want to get something done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teff.
Mr. Chairman, if you could remind the audience, please be quiet when the press people are asking.
Yes, please be quiet. We do not need anyone talking from the audience, or I will have to ask Chief Glazer to take care of business.
My name is Ron Perret, 960 Tavel. I think it's time for a change. I mean, times I've called Romelli and got no results, you have to call the city of Kenner to get something done. And I think it's time for a change. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Sidney Torres, owner of Ivy Waste. Good evening, council and mayor. First off, I want to say that there's been a lot of accusations made in the news about backroom deals. And it's very offensive to hear that, because there is no backroom deals here. Nick does not work for me, and the accusation saying he worked for me, that there was backroom deals, is just not true. Kenner called me and said they had a problem, and they wanted to take a look at what we offered. And we showed them what we offered. We showed the residents what we offered. I have no doubt in my mind that if we and the council, the council votes on this and we get the contract, that you will never look back, because the service will be the best you've ever had, and everybody will have a can. And this whole thing about $65 and trying to spin this whole thing that they're paying more money, the $65 is if somebody has a can and it gets stolen, they file a police report. If the council, the mayor say, "Replace it," we replace it. We're going to work with the city of Kenner, and I'm willing to modify whatever to make that work, but that's what's in other parish contracts. As far as a can getting damaged, that's on Ivy Waste. We will replace that can, we will fix that can in the same day. Okay? We take pride in what we do. We're a family business, and every employee that's out there on the street, I actually saw some of them as I was walking in, I told them, "Whatever you're making now, I'm going to pay you more." Okay? And I mean that, because I don't want them to lose their jobs. And when I was in line, Mr. Romelli nudged me on the leg, I shook his hand, and I understand, I mean, I feel for... And I understand, I mean, I feel for him because at the end of the day, I know he has this contract, but it's a non-exclusive contract. And you agree to those things when you sign the contract and you have to live by them. I would have to live by them too. But what I wanted to say is to clear the air and say, there is no backroom deals. I'm offering it for the same price that Romelli has it for. And I guarantee you, if you guys vote for me tonight, you will not regret it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please do not applaud. Please. Thank you. Okay, come up. Please state your name and full address for the record.
Okay. Jesse Murphy, 4237 Illinois Avenue. Just wanted to, again, I mean, it's, I know it's, you know, Romelli's in a tough spot, but I have 27 years of industry experience in the waste industry. So all I'm asking the council is, it may warrant a change. I'm not sure that's, you know, opinionated. If a change is warranted, just take a look. Because there's at least four other companies within 15 miles of the city of Kenner that all have GPS in their trucks and all this information. And there may be a, you know, this is the city of Kenner. And we don't deserve a better deal. We deserve the best deal. So, I mean, let's just take some time to look at it and let's look at options. That's all I ask. Because making a decision today without looking at all your options is not fair to the city of Kenner. So, again, I mean, it may be warranted a change. If that's the case with service, that's all, all I ask is, I think that, you know, we, you know, pick a couple of companies, two, three, look at some options. And I think it gives us a, you'll see that a lot of people offer, you know, different types of technical capabilities. So, again, we deserve the best. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else that's addressing the council, Councilman Segura, you have-
Thank you, Council President. I have a list of questions here that I have compiled after doing my due diligence research on where we're at with both companies and trying to determine which way to move forward with this. So, some of these questions, I'm going to ask the mayor or city attorney. Y'all can either decide which one answers it or not because they're probably one or the other, but sometimes better for the first or second one. So I'll go with this first question, probably city attorney. Is this current contract with Romelli a professional service contract?
It is considered by the AG's office to be a professional service contract. It's therefore exempt from the public bid law. And there is in fact a specific Louisiana statute that deals with the transportation, collection and transportation of garbage, which exempts it from the public bid law.
That particular statute allows governmental entities to issue or go into professional service contracts for waste pickup without any formalized bidding.
If the contract is 10 years or less and is non-exclusive, then the governmental entity can negotiate the contract.
Okay. Is it also in the state laws that give the mayor of the city the sole right to issue professional service contracts?
No, actually, it's our charter.
Our charter, okay. So our charter then says the mayor has that sole right to negotiate contracts for professional services.
That's correct.
So the reason that we're seeing this tonight, though, is because of a charter amendment that went up some years ago that said anything, any professional service contract over $100,000 comes to the council.
That's correct. Any contract of whether professional service or otherwise, that has a value of $100,000 or more.
Okay, thank you. But it does cover the professional services, so-
That's correct.
Does state law also allow governmental entities to have multiple waste pickup contracts at the same time?
Well, I think that's the idea of a non-exclusive contract.
Well, I realize that, but I'm just trying to get this for the clarity of the-
That's the entire purpose of a non-exclusive contract.
Okay. Well, that was going to be my next question. Please explain non-exclusive, which is in these contracts, both contracts.
Non-exclusive is exactly what it says. It means that the contracting party, the governmental entity, can have as many vendors providing the service as the governmental entity desires.
Okay, is it also pretty well-known in this region that other governmental agencies have multiple waste pickup contracts?
I know Jefferson Parish, for a fact, has multiple waste contractors picking up garbage.
And I'm just going to take it on a long shot here, probably the city of New Orleans because I see them in the news with various-
I believe the city of New Orleans has multiple contractors too.
All right, in the contract in place right now with Romelli, and then the contract before us, Ivy Waste, Section 8.1, the non-exclusivity clause, explains what state statute covers that.
The actual statute number is 33:4169.1. It is a statute that allows governmental, that provides how governmental entities are to contract for garbage contracts.
And just sort of paraphrasing, it says the rights and contracts conferred shall be non-exclusive in nature and the city makes no representations or warranty to the contrary.
Oh, the specific statute, the specific non-exclusivity clause, exactly, that's in the contract with Romelli says, "The contractor acknowledges and agrees that the rights and obligations contained herein will be non-exclusive in nature and that the city makes no representation or warranties to the contrary. And the city reserves the right to contract with other parties for any and all of the work services contained herein." This was the contract that Mr. Romelli signed in 2015/16.
Okay, so that same language will be in this proposed new contract that Ivy Waste would sign, understanding the same language.
We enhanced it a little bit, but yes, it's the exact same lang-, it's essentially the same language.
All right.
If, hearing the mumbles behind me, the exact language that's in the Ivy Waste contract reads, "Contractor acknowledges and agrees that pursuant to the requirements of Louisiana Revised Statute 33:4169.1, the rights and obligations conferred and contained herein shall be non-exclusive in nature and the city makes no representations or warranties to the contrary. The city reserves the right to contract with other parties for any and all of the work/services contained herein." All we did that is different is specifically reference the statute.
Okay. And that statute that you just read and referred to, do you know the date that the state legislature in their wisdom enacted it?
It is at least before 1983, 1983, 1982.
So it's been out there for quite a number of years.
Yes, with the specific language that allows contracts to be awarded in a non-bid process or a non-competitive process as long as the contract is non-exclusive.
Okay. I'm going to have a question for the mayor in just one second, one more question for you. With any professional service contract that the mayor puts in place, is it not true that if he chooses not to use the services of that entity anymore, there are no obligations from that point because if they're not providing the service, there's no revenue due them?
Whether it's a professional service contract or a parts and materials contract, if the city is not receiving an item or service, the city cannot pay for, cannot pay under that contract.
So the chatter about us having to continue paying for one contract while we're paying for a second is moot.
That's correct.
Thank you. That poster that's been put up there that we looked at and was referenced, and it says how much money Romelli contract received and then what the proposed contract for Ivy Waste would be. I think city administration has passed out something to clarify what is actually by check. And I think you just provided us a copy of the most recent check issued to Romelli. And what was that dollar amount?
March 2nd check to Mr. Romelli, and I'm sorry, this is all the things I had to play with here. It's a difference in terms of the Ivy Waste number he has there is a little over $200. And when that's calculated out, over $22,000 household, it appears to be a rounding error at the .001 level, so-
Is that check for recycling as well or just for garbage?
Both are for recycling and garbage.
Okay, that's for garbage only?
No, it's not. They're both for-
My numbers are for garbage only.
Mr. Romelli, I have your bill. I have your bill sitting up here. The exact amount that you are being paid is the exact amount being paid to Ivy, period. Absolutely.
Read the contract. You're paying Ivy Waste $12.32 per household to pick up a house, plus $1.90. Y'all are paying them a lot more money than y'all paid me.
Mr. Romelli, you can't, you can't-
Well, if they're going to lie, I'm going to tell the truth.
Well, Mr. Romelli, I'm not trying to make anybody a liar. I'm just trying to get to the truth. You proposed a number and the administration gave us a different number. I'm just trying to sort through it.
What you put up there was for recycling and garbage. Look at the contract, Mr. Segura, and see what your price is to pay Ivy Waste. I have it right here if you'd like me to show it to you.
I think my city attorney and administration can provide me, I don't, Mr. Romelli, I can get what you-
They can look at it, it's right here.
Well, no, my city attorney has it.
Mr. Romelli, Mr. Romelli, you cannot do this in the council chambers.
All right.
Are you finished?
Well, no, I did have, but if, I still had a question for the mayor.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any intention of canceling the contract with Romelli?
No, Councilman.
Not canceling it. Thank you.
Not canceling, no.
Okay. I do have some other questions, but I know a lot of the council members probably want to chime in, so I can-
It's up to how y'all want to do it, Council President, but I mean, if I, maybe if I make a few comments, it might answer some of the questions.
I can use my time to him.
I'm fine with that.
All right. All right, well, it's been an interesting few days because we do look at the lies and accusations that are out there. And I think Mr. Torres addressed some of those. But what we're not looking at, or what some of you are looking at, and obviously, we had more people here tonight for it, what we're doing, than against it. I guess those people are looking at what we're doing. Three years of complaints. And it's kind of hard to talk into this microphone and also show you at the same time, so I'm going to ask the city attorney to hold it up. That's just to the mayor's office. That's three years of complaints, like Mr. Teft said, unnoticed. That's the notice right there. That's three years. That's not enough for some people. You know what this is? Want to hold it up? That's y'all's complaints. That's y'all's complaints only over a year and a half. Because y'all haven't been here two years yet. Year and a half, a little bit over a year and a half. Then we go to the third binder. Want to open it up? You know what that is? That's Facebook complaints. The blue tabs, by the way, are Mr. Brown's complaints. The pink tabs are Ms. Stacy Alessandro's complaints. So the notice is there. We have put him on notice. And if there was a representative in place, which I'm not going to name people here tonight, but we all knew who the representative was. He's been named already. He was the representative who received the complaints. We called that representative-
I would ask that the rest of the people in the council chambers, please abide by our rules. Thank you.
So the complaints went to us, me, you all, Facebook, obviously. And then we sent the complaints, or we called, or we texted the representative and said, "We have a complaint." And each and every one of you all cannot deny that. I don't think anybody's going to raise their hands that they did not call the representative of Romelli, correct? Right, thank you. So therefore, three years of that, yes, I'm guilty of one thing. I'm guilty of absolutely searching because I was tired of complaints. I was tired of agreements and agreements not kept. We're not going to get into all that tonight unless somebody comes back up here and wants to get into it. But he knows and the company knows the commitments that weren't kept. So I did my due diligence and I went out and I looked for a different company. I looked for a company that would be state-of-the-art and stellar. And you know what? Most of you all have seen the facility. Ivy Waste has what the city of Kenner residents, constituents, you, me, we all deserve. Everyone out there deserves the stellar performance that they will do. iPads on the trucks, as y'all all, well, five of you all went. The drivers grab an iPad before they leave in the morning and get on the truck. The truck goes out, it has many cameras on it. The truck comes back, and in fact, the trucks that we would think would be dirty, I mean, I'm sorry, the ones that we would think would be clean are actually dirty to Ivy Waste. So they have their own cleaning area where they clean those trucks. The way they take care of their employees is, I mean, something that I want to see because it's the way we take care of our employees in the city of Kenner. The people that took a field trip recently, the residents, the true residents of the city of Kenner, saw that these things are happening for all the people that work for them. But that wasn't enough. And it might have been on first reading while we were doing all this, absolutely. And negotiations were going on, absolutely. I'm guilty of all that. You know, crucify me on that. That's what we did. But while it was going on, I still wasn't really happy with everything and totally satisfied. I was happy with what I saw, but I wasn't totally satisfied. So I did this. I put him to a test, which actually he was the lower bidder. And I put Ivy Waste in the first parade the city of Kenner has had in about 30 years. I think we heard some people tonight say, "The city of Kenner looked cleaner after the parade than it did before the parade." So they passed that test on that Saturday night, which was about two weeks ago. Met all my expectations. If a council person thinks they didn't meet it, well, then I guess you need some glasses. Because they met all the expectations with glowing remarks from the public. I feel that the people of Kenner deserve nothing but the best. In my city, in your city, you should be worried about absolutely having the best performer on the streets. Just like we try to have the best performers in public works, general services, recreation. I think we do. We get complaints on that. But you know what I do as the CEO of the city of Kenner? And what you all do as councilpeople of your districts or the two at-larges? We all address that. We all address the problems that we get. Ivy does that. I haven't seen that in the last three years. And those complaints were turned over to the right person to handle. But if for some reason Ivy Waste does not perform like I've been shown and what I've seen two Saturday nights ago, I guarantee you, we will look for a third vendor. We will look for someone else that can do that. And just so you know, Councilman Segura and Councilman Brennan were able to make another trip that we went to Waste Pro, is that correct? Waste Pro, in the city of Kenner. Mr. Jesse came here, he's a Kenner resident. I think there's some things that we can work out with Waste Pro. I think there's some things we can do there. I want to work with as many people as we can. But for right now, we're doing Ivy Waste for what we're going to give them the opportunity to do and keep our city clean. I would ask all of you all to absolutely give him a chance. Give a chance to someone who obviously has impressed our real residents of the city of Kenner. It has impressed, obviously, the most, the majority of the city council because I've spoken to most of y'all except for you, Greg. I wasn't, we weren't able to meet in the agenda meeting. But I know my CEO spoke to you and asked you if you had any questions through text. Not, I didn't speak to you directly through text. And I want you to know, on the last field trip, every district was represented. Either through a civic association president, either through a recreational mom, basically a leader in our recreation area with her kids, to, from District 1 to District 5, people who go on Facebook, people who don't go on Facebook. who go on Facebook, people who don't go on Facebook, the people of Kenner were involved in this process. What's almost puzzling to me is, we did this not too long ago, and we took over wastewater. I don't remember seeing twenty people, either speaking for it or against it, standing there saying, "Why are you doing this to Violia? Why are you going to, why are you going to hurt Violia? Why are you going to take Violia out and not employ their employees?" Guess what we did? We took it over, y'all knew that, on January first, we took it over, it moved forward, everybody's toilet is flushing, everybody's getting the service they deserve, and you know what we did with the employees? We took them in. We took those employees in, nobody really, unless they chose to quit, those people were offered a job. And we also guilty, which is what the representative from Remelli is being accused of, obviously, we took in Violia's people, the director, and we got an assistant director. So we took those people in, but that wasn't a problem, I guess. I guess when we do something good for the residents, and when the, when some residents, they go on Facebook, those ten, maybe, maybe they're up to twelve right now, those twelve people go on Facebook, and they start doing these lies and accusations, and the, you know, the fake Jefferson Parish news goes out, and I'll call it fake Jefferson Parish news, that goes out there, and it looks official, and it's nothing but lies. It's nothing but lies and accusations. It's ridiculous what we have to put up with. But look, we chose that, we chose to take this job, we chose to take the bull with the good stuff. I know it's hard to do what y'all have to do tonight, but guess what? It wasn't easy for me over the last month, either. But it's my job, it's my job to make sure that the city of Kenner has the best service it can get on the streets. If you don't perform for my constituents, and y'all should feel the same way, if you don't perform for the constituents, if you don't live up to your commitments, you're out of here, you're out of here. It's on the city level, our employees, and also our vendors, you're gone. I will get rid of you, I will come to the council if I need your help to do it, I'll get you to do it. You all were involved, y'all all were asked to be involved in every step of these negotiations after I met with Mr. Torres, once or twice, before I brought it to you all, because guess what? That's my job. That's my job to sit on the second floor, which they call a backroom deal, okay? It's my job to sit on that second floor with these two ladies, the CFO, the city attorney, and Mr. Torres and his first assistant, to sit on the second floor in a backroom deal, which is what some people lie about, and say it's corrupt. I call it city business, I call it's making, I think you had eleven people speaking in favor of it tonight, I call it's making those eleven people, plus the true, real residents of the city of Kenner, I call it make them happy. So I'm going to deliver, I'm going to give you what you expect. Has each one of your assistants received phone calls on Remelli? Be careful how you answer, because it's right here in his book. They did. Each one of your assistants received a phone call on Remelli. I'm going to deliver where you don't get those phone calls anymore. One councilman told me today, and y'all can, you can say who you are when it comes to your turn, and we both know who you are, at least twenty-five to thirty percent of his calls, complaints are on garbage collection. That's ridiculous, guys. I mean, that puts, that ties up your assistant where they could be doing more. My assistant, who someone has praised, and a few other praises, gets the same calls. Obviously, she gets a lot more than what your assistants do, because we continue to get the complaints, we continue to turn it over to the representative, we see things not happening, and we have to deliver. I'm going to deliver, it's up to you all tonight, it's upon you all tonight, if y'all choose not to vote for it, but tell me, do me a favor, don't call me anymore. Don't call me if you don't, I'll, I'll take them, I'll take my calls on garbage, and I'll, I'll handle the constituents of the city of Kenner, but if y'all choose not to do what I'm asking you to do, and that's your right, if you choose to vote against it, please don't call me for it, because I'm going to remind every constituent, hey, I tried to change it, I tried to change it. What's going on right now will not be allowed in the city of Kenner, as long as I'm the mayor. Hopefully, you all feel the same way. Now, I'm here to answer more questions, I think that answered probably a few things that you may have had, I think we've answered the trash cans, Mr. Teff did an excellent job on asking that question, the embarrassing comments by Mr. Remelli, I think he knows why I'm embarrassed, we just have to go through some of the things that happened back around when I sat in this seat, December twentieth or twenty-first, whatever that last council meeting was of the year, and I said, "You're going to get these three things." I don't think we have them. I'm sorry, I'm guilty, I gave it to the representative, the representative told me they were going to do it, he was being employed by Mr. Remelli. So I would think the representative, I had trust in him, I think Mr. Remelli had trust in him, was telling us it was going to happen. I gave you a date of, well, not a date, but a time period of mid-January. Do our constituents have those things? No, they don't. All I can say is that we will move in this direction with y'all's blessing, with y'all's support of it. I don't know what else I could have done to educate you all on it, and keep y'all out of a backroom deal, and make sure that the residents of the city of Kenner get the stellar service that I feel IV can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Another question before I yield my time to other council members, is just to clearly reiterate, and I know that you acknowledged Mr. Teff bringing it up, the question on the cart fee. First off, the contract clearly requires the contractor in this to deliver a brand-new ninety-six-gallon cart for garbage to every household. There's no cost involved individual outside of what that contractor is going to be paid by us to do. There's no additional cost to a resident for that can. You will also get a thirty-six-gallon recycling cart, which we don't have, have never had, wanted to get, but don't have, which you can put your recyclables in and roll it out to the curb, have a lid on it so it doesn't get blown all down the street. I'm a big fa, a big fan of recycling, and I get every newspaper that I can get every day, but I got to get rid of them, so when I throw them out, I don't want them blowing down the street. So the cart that will come as part of this contract is a thirty-six-gallon cart. As Mr. Torres elaborated, but it is clearly in the contract that he must warranty these cans for ten years, the span of his contract. So any repair, any damage to the can by whatever means is up to him to repair and replace, as you heard him say, he will do it. I know he said in one day, but I'd be satisfied if I get it in three days compared to the weeks and months that we've been waiting for other repairs. The cost of an additional can, if you believe that you have more garbage to put out than the one ninety-six-gallon can supplied, you do have that option to purchase from the contractor an additional can. And yes, that is the can that will cost you sixty-five dollars. It will be, and even though I know Mr. Brown says it's in the contract, I agree, I caught that, it is coming out. That can is your can. If you pay for an extra can, you're right, I saw it, talked to the city attorney already, somewhere in here we'll have some amendments, that line is coming out. You paid for it, it's your can, not a question. There is still some conversation going on with what happens when a resident reports their can missing. Did it get stolen? Did it get brought to a hunting camp or fishing camp and then said, "Oh, let me get another can to replace it?" Well, those are things that we are still, I am still, I've spoke with Mr. Torres at length on this topic, and we are coming to a conclusion, and he has said that if the, as the contract does require a police report to be written, and Chief, I know you hate seeing these reports come in and drive up stats because of thefts, but this is the only way that we can try to refrain from people just arbitrarily removing cans for their other personal use that are property of the contractor. And so with that, if they fill out the police report, reporting it stolen, he is willing to work with us and, I'm not going to say exactly for sure, but replace the can at no cost, we still got to work out some details. But the next point is, every can that is put out is going to be barcoded and assigned in the database to that house. So now, if your can does go missing, and somewhere it shows up somewhere else, and that barcode is run and determined that's not where it belongs, we do know where it will belong. So we will be able to find out if the can was actually misplaced, stolen, or used for another means. But the point is, that's the technology that's coming to us, is to be able to assign a can to a house, and we will know that that can belongs to that house. And Mr. Torres has also, someone else questioned, he don't have a problem, spray paint your address on that can if you want to know it belongs to you also, to let your neighbors know that. But we will have the barcoding process to track, follow, and determine where these cans go. So I know I did have some others, but I'm going to stop and yield to other council members.
Thank you, Councilman Segura. Councilman Hayes?
Thank you, Councilman Bernigan. That sign up there says wasteful spending. While we were talking, the, I received the advice, and it's an ACH banking document. Now, what that means is automatic clearinghouse. And an automatic clearinghouse is the same amount each month. It's not a check, it's an automatic payment. And that automatic payment that cleared our account on March the second, 2020, was two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. If you multiply that by twelve, and then multiply that by six years, you're right where both companies are. There's no discrepancy. About nineteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. I would say there is wasteful spending here. It's the spending that was wasted on making that incorrect sign. That's the only wasteful spending that I see. My relationship with Sidney Torres goes back a long time, when I was president of the Chamber of Commerce. I supported his dealings with the Jefferson Parish school system, he won that contract. Everybody cheered it, everybody. Somebody mentioned in this crowd that this decision will follow us. I hope the decision does follow us, because I hope everybody, on election day, two years from now, remembers this discussion, because you're going to be pleased, this is going to be a home run. Based on my experience with Sidney, based on his capability, there's nobody better, in my humble opinion, around here in terms of what he can do electronically to keep track, the management system that he has in place now, some people said they have seen it, it is unbelievable how you can track this. On a half-hour basis, he can respond to any kind of emergency needs. What happened to Sidney Torres in five years? He had a non-compete contract. He's over that right now. He can compete. He's not only going to compete, he's going to tear the world up in terms of waste management. I predict that. But again, don't look at that sign, it's not the case. The photo that the mayor talked about was a buildup of what we all have been experiencing. I have District Three. In two years, I have a hundred and twenty-two complaints here, in terms of people complaining to my, I don't even call them my associates. Darrell Lindoza's my associate, she does all the work in the office. This is a major part of how she spends her daily activity. It's nonsense. It's something that we shouldn't be experiencing. I'm a businessman. If I ran a business like this, I'd be out of office. It has taken us sometimes, what is a, what does a company does that picks up trash? They put trash cans out. I can't tell you the number of times we've called for trash cans, and we had to wait weeks, because there's no inventory of trash cans. What does that indicate? Probably a lack of capital, that somebody can't afford to buy the trash cans that are needed. So what we do, I've had my constituents go to Home Depot, go to Lowe's and buy trash cans, or borrow it from somebody else. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud of this decision, I'm going to vote for this change, and come Election Day, we've been in office July of eighteen. Hopefully, in a couple of years, when we're in office again, we can look back at this. I guarantee you it's going to happen. This is going to be a plus for the current administration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank everybody for coming up for and against, that's what this process is about, to be able to come up and to share your comments, either if you are for it or against it. Hey, I'm a big boy, I can, I can take comments that give me confidence, or give me approval, or disapproval, I can, I can deal with that, and I will continue to do that. Just full disclosure, I was not one of the five that took the ride, I just wanted to, just to put that out there, and also to tell the mayor, I already wear glasses, so I don't, I don't need any more, any more glasses, so I'm, I'm good with my glasses. Also, as far as Violia, I was never really a big Violia fan for a number of reasons, but I'm, I'm not going to, to go into that. But I, what I am going to say, that I am not a fan, or a cheerleader for Remelli or IV. That's not my job. I don't have any connections, I don't know IV, I know Remelli, because over the tw, my ten, over ten years on the, on the council, I have developed a relationship with some of the workers, and the men and women that drive the truck. So obviously, I know them, but that's about it. I don't, I don't get any special treatment, anything, anything like that. And yes, I have gotten complaints from my constituents on Remelli's service. But you know what? I've gotten complaints from Cox Cable, Entergy, U-verse, Atmos, Code, Planning, I've gotten complaints from everybody, and will continue to get it. So that is just par for the course, we are going to get complaints, and it is our responsibility to field the complaints. My assistant, it is part of her job to take every complaint, if that person calls every day to take that complaint, she's only doing what she's supposed to do, and she will continue to do what she's supposed to do. Because I want to get the call, because I want to be part of the conversation to see what goes on, and how can I facilitate that? No matter what facilit, what contractor gets the job, there are going to be complaints about it. And if there are complaints, I am going to reach out to that person if the individuals call me and say, "Listen, we are having a problem here," or "We are having a problem there." If I don't get any response from that individual, then I will call the mayor's office and let him know that I am not getting, if I vote for this or not, I am going to call and say, "My constituent is not satisfied." I'm going to call. Now, whether I get a response back or not, that we'll, we'll have to see, but I am going to call somebody to say, "Something is not going well." Simple as that, because that is my job to do that. It is my opinion and my job to vote either way that I feel is best for the people that I represent. It is my job to let people know when people are not fulfilling their obligations, and I will do that. You know, in addition also to the, me personally, I'm a Kenner boy, I'm not ashamed of that, I always try to look to get people who work in, who are from the city of Kenner, if they're capable of doing the job. If they can't do the job, then we have to look elsewhere. The mayor has to look elsewhere, and I am not going to support someone just because they're from Kenner if they can't do the job. But I am open to first listening to people from the city of Kenner, because I believe that's just, that's just the thing to do for our, for our people who work here, who spend. that's just the thing to do for our people who work here, who spend their money here in the city of Kenner. You know, we have these signs that say, "Buy Kenner first, buy this, buy that." All of that is good, but all of us have to participate in that part of it. All of us. To support the people, the businesses from the city of Kenner. All of us. You know, I understand about it being a professional service and all that, yes. Legally, there's nothing anybody is doing wrong, if we decide to do that. But, we don't have to do that. You know, we choose, within our charter, to do it that way. Jefferson Parish, I don't believe, do that, and there may be other municipalities that put it out for bid, for a contract that this large. But that's the way our rules are right now, and this is what we have to live with until we change it. Even the part about the non-exclusive contract, I get that too, and there is a reason for why that is made throughout the state, not just Kenner, that we do that in case there is an emergency, that we have to reach out to other people to support us. We can have a number of companies to work with us, just like Jefferson Parish, just like New Orleans. So, we have to be able to do that, to ensure that we, you, the citizens, receive the services that you need to receive, in case of an emergency. You know, also about the garbage can, unless I'm confused, the original, the first garbage can that a person receives, or a family or a business receives, will be free. But, I just need some clarity based on what is in the contract, or my book that I have, and I'm gonna read it, as it reads from Section 38.2. It says, "If any cart or carts are stolen or vandalized, the resident or small business owner shall obtain a police report, and will be charged $65 per replacement chart. The cart will remain the contractor's property at the end of the contract." So I listened to Councilman Segura, I got a little confused, because I didn't know exactly, has it been defined yet in the contract? I only know what this reads. So if this is not true, I would like to know now, Mr. Attorney, what part, because I'm assuming that if you get the report, and you ask for a replacement, that you're gonna need $65. Is that?
I'm sorry, Councilman.
Yeah, on Section 38.2, it says, "If any cart is stolen or vandalized, business or resident, police report, and you will be charged $65." And that's part of, I guess this is the contract that I'm reading, is that part of the contract?
It is the contract, it is the document as it is written currently. Councilman Segura pointed that out to me at the end of last week, and I had not gotten, and Councilman Segura had said, and the mayor had said, "No, we don't want that in there," and I had not had a chance to get that taken back out. Understand, the ordinance that you passed right now, assuming you passed the ordinance right now, states that you are authorizing the mayor to enter into a 10-year contract. It is not necessarily specifically this document, because there are some, there are actually a couple of typographical errors where I put Parish as opposed to city. Heaven forbid, I missed a few words in there.
I get it.
So there are gonna be a couple of cleanups because of that? They just didn't get done before today?
Yeah. I think this cleanup need to be cleaned up before we vote on this, if we are gonna do it. Because, I don't wanna go into a situation-
Actually, Councilman, you could propose an amendment to strike it, and then that is part of the ordinance, and we can strike it that way.
No, no, I agree with Councilman, but I'm just saying, let's get it in place, to ensure, before we vote on it, that this is not part of it.
The only issue, well, the issue, the issue out there on, that is, on the issue of the ownership, you can propose an amendment that would strike it, and then that does it, that takes care of it.
Right. And I think we're all on the same page. Councilman Segura agrees, the mayor agrees, I agree, that this should not be in here, and we need to address that. So everybody in the city of Kenner will not be held responsible, after we walk away from here, that they have to pay $65.
Point of order?
As I said a few minutes ago, I had already spoken with the city attorney. To have that sentence struck from the contract, that said, "If you purchase a second cart, it remains the property of the contractor. That is your cart, you paid for it." So that, I'm asking, what is the process? Do I need to, as Councilman Carroll was asking, an amendment right now? Or as you're saying, it'll get removed from the contract, because it is a contract, and you can change that language at any time?
Amendments to the contract, once the contract is signed, once we have a signed binding contract, would require a formal amendment that would come in front of you guys. The ordinance that you are, that is before you right now, authorizes the mayor to enter into the contract. So, we can do it either way you want.
I think for the clarity, what I'm proposing, and I want the public to clearly understand.
Or you, we can make line item additions to the ordinance, and it takes care of it, and I clean up the contract tomorrow.
Okay. Well then, I want to make that motion for that line item, for that line to be struck from the contract.
Well, let me finish, and then we can do that. I just, I think we're all saying the same thing. It is my concern that we address this tonight, and not any other time.
That's fine.
And I agree, that if a person wants a second garbage can, that yes, they would have to pay for that. I'm not disputing that. But I believe that if it's stolen or vandalized, that that should not be the case for the people that live in the city of Kenner.
Councilman, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
How many times stolen, though? What if, just what if, you know, we live in a world that one person figures out that, "Well, I can report a stolen can every week." Do we wanna, look, this contract didn't happen over one night. This contract took a few weeks to get to this point. So, what you're asking us to do immediately, we would have to have conversations on that, because I'm not saying we have those types of residents, but we could have a resident that figures out, "Oh, I gotta camp here, my friend's gotta camp here," and all of a sudden, you got a stolen can more than once a year? See what I'm saying? I mean, this is a business also, so you gotta give us some kind of leadway, that we're working on that, and we can always amend the contract later.
Yeah.
But I hear what you're saying. I absolutely hear what you're saying, but I hope you hear what I'm saying.
I am, I am. And I'm gonna go on record and say, we do have some residents like that, that would steal.
We could, I mean, we could. I mean, all over the city, but I-
All over the city, we got 'em.
Right. But I just get concerned that, you know, somebody figures it out, because they listen to this right now, and, "Well, he's got a stolen can, we're gonna have to have some type of a cutoff." Are you proposing?
I do, we can work on that, I just want to make sure today, that we do not, the language in it now does not say, it doesn't say what I'm proposing. It says, "There will be a fee, if it happens one time." Now, I believe that could be a number that we all agree upon, yes, but tonight, I want to make sure that this language is not in there. And, I think we can do that tonight, before we, and as Councilman Segura said, he would-
Let's do this, if you don't mind. As the other councilpeople are speaking, we're working on it.
Yes.
Is that good?
That's fair.
All right, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney. So we'll do that, and in closing, I mean, listen, at the end of the day, my responsibility, or my opinion, will be my opinion, and for the, particularly for the people for District 1, and I'm gonna vote as I feel is the best interest for them, from a financial standpoint, and from the contractor overall, as it relates to doing business in the city of Kenner, because that's important to me, too. How we are perceived from an outside is important, for everything that we do, how we conduct ourselves at the meetings, how, all of that stuff, professionalism is priority one. What is perceived, and what is not perceived. So that is important to me, too. And that is what I am concerned about from this, regardless if it's Romelli or anyone else. I do want to go on record and say that I was, myself and another councilman, did not support the recycling fee, because I didn't think that was fair. I don't think we should have had that. Maybe we could have done something else, but at that time, I would have loved to hear some information, some, just a little information, as it relates to some of the things that have been expressed tonight, but I didn't hear that. And, I don't know why we didn't go into that, because maybe we were specifically talking about recycling, and that's why we didn't. And it was just a recycling, to be able to offer this commodity to the citizens. And I get that. But, like I said, you know, nobody's gonna be perfect. I wish, whatever the contractor person winds up to be, is star quality, because that's what we want. All of us want that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Brenner?
Thank you, Council Chair. I've fielded many calls in regard to this, in the last few days, text messages, emails. We've met with Mr. Romelli. When we did have meetings, things did improve, and unfortunately, it kinda would improve for a period of time, and then taper off. I've got emails here, and I'm not gonna read all of them, but just some highlights for a few of them, and it's safe to say, this is the majority of them, where people say they contacted the waste company, emailed, called. I've had no response. Here's one that says, "I've made two requests online, and have called in the last four months, and was told my new trashcan would be processed. It is now going on five months, no new can. The waits range from one month to six months. This was a neighborhood that had a couple of cans, and this lady was trying to help elderly people in her neighborhood get some cans. I've contacted Romelli three to four times over the past few months." And some of them go further to say, "The equipment's broken." I think the important part of that, is that with technology, a couple of things come to mind, and have, and that's, should people have to be calling the council offices, or the mayor's office, to get a replacement garbage can? Quite honestly, we're fine with that, because our assistants generally call the company, and generally, we can get it worked, and the constituent ends up calling us, thanking us, because we finally got the can replaced, or the recycling bin. With technology, that this company, and as the mayor said, we went and looked at Waste Pro the other day as well, the technology that those companies have, it's reported immediately. And, in the situation that they get there, and cans are damaged, cans are reported, the driver can report it, while the people are loading or unloading the trashcans. And, it's gonna be, if, I don't want to say if, everything we've been told, from the visits, and from the reputation, I think people are gonna be very, very pleased with this. And, again, my office, the lady that assists me, spends 25% to 30% of our phone calls are related to trash issues. And, I just believe, that if we start to go down this road, and it's gonna be an issue, the mayor's gonna come back, the administration's gonna come back, and we're gonna go ahead and have to revisit that contract with that person. So, that's, I'm gonna close with that. I have many more of these, I have in excess of 40 emails, and I just believe we're doing a good service for our clients, and pardon me, our constituents. Thank you very much, Mr. Council Chair.
Councilman Hayes?
I just want to make sure everybody understands, the technology that Mr. Torres is using is not a off-the-shelf technology, it's a proprietary system. So he can tweak it any kind of way we really demand. And each can is assigned a number. I would suggest three, three cans on an annual basis. If they say they have a can stolen three different times, we can track that, and we can address that. That's a number I think we could really rely on, and look at. But, again, he's got the capability of addressing our needs, because it is a proprietary system.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make comment, that I really appreciate these people up here on this council. The amount of phone calls, and contact, and meetings, and the mayor, too, and Ed Rapier, and the rest of the administration, really, outstanding job. We put in a ton of time, all of us. I'm not trying to toot my own horn, but I just want to make sure that the public is aware of the importance that everybody feels that this is. I mean, we all want the best for the city. There's no question about that. And according to everything I've learned in the last few days, or even a month or so, it's actually been that long. Like, again, we had numerous meetings, and the amount of phone calls from people, we've all learned a lot, we all feel a particular way, and we're all gonna vote the way we feel is right. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman McKenney?
Thank you. You know, I think that this is an opportunity for the city, I think it's an opportunity for the citizens of Kenner, to get better service. You know, I've, like all of my colleagues, we get other, we get lots of complaints to, my office gets lots of complaints, and, you know, I just wanted to read, there's a couple of complaints that really stand out in my mind. "I have lived in Kenner for 40 years. Romelli is the worst garbage contractor that I've ever had. Often, they drop my can in the street, and out in front of my neighbor's home. They spill trash while collecting it, and they don't pick it up. When they collect recycling on Thursday, it's really bad." I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not, I know this is not a Romelli trash bashing, but some of these things are really serious. I mean, and, you know, I've had my complaints, you know, they've also had from people who've worked for the organization for the city of Kenner, and who actually did the complaints for past contractors, and they requested, you know, two online requests, they haven't had anything. Romelli has actually taken broken trashcans, and not replaced their trashcans. You know, I mean, that's, to me, that is a service provider and customer service, customer service is one of the most important things, that I think that any organization can provide. And I think that unfortunately, you know, the level of service that we were getting with Romelli has been subpar, and I think that, you know, we're familiar with Ivy Waste. Everyone knows the quality of, the quality that's provided by, you know, Sidney Torres, his waste company, in the past. I mean, you know, I think that, to me, this is a win for the city of Kenner, it's a win for all of the residents, and I just don't see, you know, I don't see that having better, having a better and higher-quality service product and service provider is a bad thing for any citizen of Kenner. And, you know, I think the trash organization is, it's gonna be influential in the community, or, you know, in the trash business, and I think it already has, to demand better quality, to, you know, to change the organization. And I think that this is a step in the right direction. We need to do this, and I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Councilman Segura?
Thank you, Council President. In closing the discussion, just wanted to follow up, I know, as the mayor- I know, as the mayor has shown from his binders, in that blue one, I mean, the white one that he said come from council members, you've heard from several of the council members report what they had in complaints, I want to add that in my district, I have had just under 150 complaints about cans, garbage not picked up, and we email that complaint in. We may follow up with a phone call to his representative to say, "Where is it at? What's happened with the request?" But the comment that was mentioned earlier about no notification of problems is not accurate. There was plenty of notification to the contractor of problems with the service, not just in my district, but as you've heard, with other districts. So the mayor's office, that is well, obviously, published and backed up to show that citizens have been contacting us as elected officials to try to intercede and get their problem resolved, and a lot of times, it was because they tried through the company, Ramelli, and never got the response that they anticipated. Weeks, months, sometimes it never got cans replaced, when trash was left. The hoppers who emptied the cans, it's a training thing, I understand, and a business decision on how much time a route takes to clear, but when they empty that can and items fall out on the ground, they very seldom pick them up. While we were visiting Mr. Torres's company and watched on his cameras on the back of the truck, we could witness and see clearly, and I'm just going to say it, his training with his hoppers where something falls out of this can and don't go in the truck, that truck don't leave without picking it up, putting it into the truck. If it's training, if it's incentive with his bonus program, that if they don't get any dings, they get a bonus, whatever, but it works, because if their drivers are doing what they're supposed to do, I mean, the driver or the hoppers are doing what they're supposed to do on the route, that's what we deserve. Our contracts require it, and we deserve that service. All residents deserve that. This is a, my next comment's going to be clarifying something else that's been said about why do we not bid this? Clearly, we've addressed with the statute that's in place, the state law, that says that trash pickup is a professional service, can be. We've always used that as the terms of the contract. It's been said in a publication that the city of Kenner has the lowest contract fees for garbage pickup in South Louisiana. So ladies and gentlemen, what that means is, that number is a fact to our research, that we have the lowest fee for garbage pickup based upon the fact that, I think it was 2007 when Mr. Ramelli first went on the contract for garbage pickup at a fee, and then based upon the Consumer Price Index, it climbs, and we get to where we're at today. And if other jurisdictions who did, by their means, bidding go out, we know they're paying in excess of $15, $16 a household, where I think we're at $12, somewhere in the neighborhood. So the scary thing here is, bidding is not always to your advantage. If we put it out for bid, and the low bidder is higher than what we're paying now, we have no choice. We now have to charge you that much money more than what you've been paying, because we bid it out, and the low bidder is now higher than what we pay now. That is a fact. No way around it. Once we bid it, it has to go to the low bidder, and if the low bidder is more than we're paying, and you get unhappy, and you tell us, "Why am I paying more?", it's because of that decision that went that route. This decision to take the route of the, taking the contract that's in place and got in a understanding agreement from another vendor that I will pay the same as that contract, but I'm going to give you these services, not only what's in the contract, but I'm also offering you these, the cameras on the trucks. It was mentioned about the iPads. Well, you know what that iPad is used for? When they come down the street, and if you put out large items, furniture, refrigerators, trash, the driver takes a picture of that, it's sent in to their headquarters, and that is immediately scheduled for a pickup for that trash. I don't have that now. I've got to beg, borrow, cry, whatever, to get that picked up. This is a service that he offers. We get complaints from residents that say, "Hey, they didn't put the can back on the curb. They left it in the street. It gets hit by a car, and it's broke." Okay. Mr. Torres, would you pull up your video of that route on that date and time? I want to see what happened at that location. Within a short period of time, he, as well as us, are going to see that video to know what took place. If his hoppers are at fault, that's on him, and then we can settle with the resident if there was damages to property or whatever. But if it didn't happen, we can clearly go back to our resident and say, "Look, here's what the video shows, and what do you want me to do?" Generally, most of the time, "Oh, I thought this happened, so if that shows it didn't, okay, I'm fine." Then we'll move on. But at least with the technology, the equipment that he's going to have on these trucks, immediately when they hit the street, we have that available to us to do those things. So I think you've heard enough tonight to show that having a second professional service contract should be, and in my determination, the best thing for this city, and that the service that we will get from this contract provider will be certainly better than we have now, but as the mayor said, and Sidney's hearing it right now, if he doesn't, he knows he's got a non-exclusive contract, and he could be sitting on this side when somebody else comes in. So Sidney, I know you promised, and I trust that you're going to keep your promise based on your quality of life that you have already. I know your mom said about how when you were a young kid, you took the spray bottle and cleaned the floors and the walls, and you're still cleaning, so I guess there's a good quality in you to keep things clean. So with that, I strongly endorse approving this contract and move this city forward to keeping our streets and neighborhoods clean. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I will please introduce a amendment.
The First Amendment would be to delete the verbiage of Section 2, and Section 2 would read that the mayor of the city of Kenner is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to give effect to this ordinance. I have a motion by Councilmember Segura.
What, question comes after it's on the floor?
Yes. I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKenney on the amendment as the clerk read. Is there any discussion on the amendment as I just read? Yes, it's going to delete the verbiage of Section 2, which read that any amendments to this contract may be approved by resolution. It will now read, Section 2, that the mayor of the city of Kenner is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to give effect to this ordinance. I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKenney on the amendment. Any other discussion on this amendment as the clerk has read? Councilmembers?
So you're saying that not a resolution, and it is not an ordinance? Or what were we saying?
This is an amendment to the ordinance that was before you. Section 2 previously read that any amendments to this contract may be approved by resolution. We will delete that verbiage, and it will now read that the mayor of the city of Kenner is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to give effect to this To re-clarify, we have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKenney on the amendment.
On the amendment and on the vote on this particular piece of legislation, as everyone is aware of, I am an insurance broker for Mr. Ramelli's company, and I will be abstaining the vote based on a legal opinion that I have from an ethical attorney.
Councilmember McKenney would like to speak prior to the vote on the amendment.
Yes, I just want to clarify, so we're taking the, that it won't be, it won't, sorry, that it won't be by resolution, any amendments will need to be by ordinance in the future.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
On the amendment as read by the clerk, please vote. Motion passes 6-0. Councilmember Branigan has abstained. Now, at this time, we will entertain another amendment that will be as a motion by Councilmember... This is the other amendment that was proposed as the request of Councilmember Segura, as well as Councilmember Carroll. Attorney Rapier will read it into the record at this time.
I think this amendment takes care of both problems. It'd be, we will be adding back a Section 2, so you will still have Section 3, that the mayor of the city of Kenner is hereby authorized. But Section 2 will read that the contract shall contain language that provides any carts purchased by a resident or small business shall remain the property of the resident or small business. Period. The first cart that needs to be replaced, because the original was stolen, shall be replaced for free, for free to the resident upon the submission of a police report.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura, you want to reverse it? Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Carroll? How do you want?
Motion by Councilmember Carroll.
Motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura, on the amendment as read by Attorney Rapier. Any discussion on this amendment? Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. Motion passes 6-0. Councilmember Branigan has abstained. Back to your original ordinance as amended. Any further discussion? Councilmembers, please vote as amended. Motion passes 4-2. Councilmembers Willmont and Carroll are opposed. Councilmember Branigan has abstained. Item 15N, a resolution approving Amendment Number 2 to the agreement with the city of Kenner and Elos Environmental LLC for geographic information system services to extend the agreement term.
Quiet in the chamber, please. I have a motion by Councilman Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Segura. Councilmembers, please vote.
15N, we're on 15N. Two more votes. Motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is a resolution amending Rule Number 14 of the Rules of Organization, Business, Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees. We have none. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just would like to say that, as I mentioned earlier, I went to a meeting last night, a Jefferson Parish School Board meeting, and at their headquarters, and I got to tell you, it was attended by over 400 people that came out to address the plan that was proposed by the Jefferson Parish School Board, along with the superintendent. It was a great opportunity for people to be able to speak their mind, to be able to talk about some of the things that they liked, some of the things they didn't like, as opposed to adding the things they like, adding more social workers into all of the schools, some of the things that are not favorable, some schools not having a cafeteria, not having a playlot, to be able to work on that. Particularly, the most important thing as it related to the people in South Kenner District 1, address the proposed closing of Washington Elementary and moving the students to Bunch. Well, that was tabled, and for the next year and a half, that will not be the case. The children will be at Bunch, excuse me, will be at Washington, and now it is a, the plan with the school board, the residents, to work on something to ensure that Washington Elementary is forever part of the history of the city of Kenner. So while there were a couple of schools, particularly on the West Bank, that did not fare as well, and I'm not happy to say that that happened, hopefully, there may be some things that can happen, but I am glad to say that Washington Elementary, which, you know, goes back 100 years, is not part of that, and it will be serving, educating students as it has for a number of years. You know, there were a couple of things that were said that really was, I guess, in a sense, either narcissistic or condescending to the cities of Weswego and the city of Kenner, one being that the, it was assumed that the city of Kenner does not care about education for the children. It was alleged that that's, you know, maybe in a joke, but I don't think that's anything to joke about, because it is obviously not true that we don't care about education. We have provided support for every school within the confines of the city of Kenner, either financially, going out to help fix things, or whatever we can. So, you know, it was said as a joke, but it's just not true, you know. Also, it was a concern about our resolution that was passed, that maybe we should have gotten permission from the Jefferson Parish School Board. I disagree with that also, that we don't have to get their permission to do something that we always do all the time. Our obligation as it relates to this particular subject, to Washington Elementary, was to convey our opinions to our school board representative, and we did that. And from that point on, it worked out pretty good, the conversation with the board, the full board. So we want to say that. You know, it was also insinuated that we, as a council, or I can only speak for me as an individual, that we did not support the tax increase for the teachers. We did. I supported it personally. I can't speak, we didn't do anything as a board, but we did support it, because we believed, I believed, that the teachers should have received the increase, and I'm glad that that did pass. You know, at the end of the day, the conversation is, it is the responsibility of the school board to ensure the schools in Jefferson Parish are whole. They can delegate authority to different people, which is natural, but it is their responsibility, and we look forward to helping as much as we can, but at the end of the day, it is the responsibility of the school board, and we look forward to helping them to ensure that we are providing top-notch education to all of the children, not just the charter schools, not just the A schools, but all of the schools. So with the support of everyone, we look forward to continuing the education throughout the city of Kenner, particularly at Washington Elementary, and I appreciate everybody that supported that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business, and a motion to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
The first one up is Mr. Richard Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Brown.
Richard Brown, eight twenty-four Sessions Lane, Kenner. I really hate being the first one, but I got here early and signed in first. I've got so many things I want to say, don't even know where to begin, there's no way to touch on all of them. I am glad that several council members acknowledged that I was correct when I pointed out the difference in the two contracts regarding replacement trash cans, and to respond to my friend, Mr. Teft, you know, I've got both contracts, you can compare the two provisions. The Romelli contract clearly says, Romelli replaces all trash cans regardless of whether they are damaged, stolen, vandalized, he does it at his cost. The IV waste contract says, when it comes to stolen cans, you have to pay for it, and even when you pay for it, the can is still his. You folks fixed that, thank you, I appreciate it. That is the difference in the contracts. But the, his contract does not require him to replace damaged cans, not, not free of charge, anyway, it doesn't say anything about replacing damaged cans. Now, I heard him say that he will do it if you folks tell him to, so he still doesn't have to, but that was the difference. I resent people saying I didn't know what I was talking about, it is in the contract, y'all acknowledged it, Mr. Carroll found it, Mr. Segura, you acknowledged there's a difference, I appreciate that, and I appreciate y'all fixing it, but that was the difference in the contracts. Listen, I hope we get good service, and better service. I don't think, I, I don't think I've had a single complaint about Romelli, except one time, when I needed a replacement trash can, I called my councilman, Mr. Branigan, and I got one, I think, in a couple of weeks. I don't really call that a complaint, but in here from this podium, in the December meeting, when Mayor Zahn was singing the praises of Mr. Romelli and telling us how good he had been for the city, I raised the question of whether there was a breach of contract by him saying he would not pick up the recycling without more money. The mayor's response was, there has been no breach of contract, and a lot has been said about whether or not he's been given notice of things. I'm talking about the legally required notice in a contract, notice from the mayor that says, you are in default, and I challenged the mayor's office, or the city attorney, or anybody to show where he has ever been sent such a formal notice of default with a demand to pay the penalties provided in the contract. There's a penalty of two hundred fifty dollars, or two hundred dollars, for not replacing a trash, trash can timely. That's the kind of notice I was talking about, not a phone call from you folks or a meeting.
Mr. Brown, thank you.
Counselman?
Yes.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, you can.
As usual, Mr. Brown comes up here and misleads the public. What I said at the December meeting was, Mr. Romelli had met us halfway on what we were trying to do for recycling. When he comes up here and twists my words, we're not talking about the breach of contract, we're talking about adding another vendor. So, as he continues to come up here and mislead the public and lie about me, like him and his friends do on Facebook, on all the, other media outlets, I grow tired of that. It's not, it is not his position to come up here and twist my words, it should not be his position to come up here and twist my words and continue to do this. What I was trying to do on December twentieth, and I think I spoke about this during my speech, I was making sure the council remembered, when I met with three of you all at a time, and Councilman Carroll was filled in later on by Deborah Foshee, that this was what Romelli and his representative had met us halfway with. That's what I was reminding you all before you voted on it, because there was some discussion on not supporting the amendment on recycling. As we all know, that was a lengthy council meeting, I think we probably ate lunch at five o'clock, and it started eleven o'clock in the morning. That was my words then. Mr. Brown continues to do this with his friends, and I'm just not gonna stand for it anymore, because it's ridiculous. He takes one thing, he twists it around, and lies to the public.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn. Caitlin New, Newswares? John, John Dehaven? Please state your name and full address.
Scott Frisherts, eight twenty-eight Sessions Lane. I had actually signed up to talk about the other thing, which I already have, but I do want to thank y'all, the water's great now, the bill has come down, everything's good. The only thing I'd like an update on, the sewage that we talked about, the sewer problem with the, with the water backing up when it rains, we're getting ready to get into rainy season, haven't had it lately, because we haven't had a really bad downpour. They came out, they did the smoke test in my, right on my street, they did the smoke test, they marked with, with green, green paint, they marked where the sewer lines were going into the street, and I was just wondering if anybody had an update on what they plan to do, fixing it, okay? You don't have to be right now, if somebody can get back with me, but thank you.
Yes, we have, we did smoke test the lines, there was two residents where they had private property issues, we've, we've repaired the manholes that were on the street, there's lateral lines that are going, that's what we marked, where the lateral lines go across the street, because Mr. Frisherts is across the street from the main line. So, we're, we've studied the issues, we think we found all the problems, and we'll check with the next heavy rain event to see how, how it works out, because we haven't really, we haven't had any service requests from that area lately.
Okay, thank you. If, if you do have any service requests?
Please call four six eight seven two nine two, that's the office.
And I would ask you to let my office know about it, because he is in my district.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Charlene Taylor? Al Morella?
Can I let this young lady go before me and go after her?
Sure.
Hello again, Stacy Alessandro, thirty-three oh nine, Chateau Boulevard. First off, I wanted to say to Council President Branigan and the other council members, I wanted to apologize for my outburst earlier. I'm sorry that I did that, but a person can only take so much harassment as a private What the mayor just said about Richard Brown was uncalled for, and when he talks about his, Richard Brown and his friends, I'm one of Richard Brown's friends, and I'm proud to be that, I'd like to know an example of a lie that we put out on Facebook, but I want to say, this harassment needs to stop. Mr. Brown and I went to the mayor privately to ask him to help us get our website back. If anybody twisted anything around and lied, it was that man right there, he tried to have us arrested, he tried to have us charged with multiple felonies, but the DA got those charges and wouldn't hear any of it. They were refused, and we were cleared, we were vindicated. And then tonight, I am trying to record this meeting as I am allowed to do by the open meetings law. Louisiana law specifically addresses video recording, and I had the right to do that, and I was escorted to the back. Now, I want to say that a lot of people texted me recently, just a few minutes ago, this has nothing to do with the Kenner police, or anybody who talked to me, I love our KPD, they are awesome, and this is not about them, it's about the fact that my rights were violated. And finally, he holds up a big binder, binder tonight, with Richard Brown and Stacy Alessandro, we have our own tabs in his big binder, I'm not gonna be intimidated, but I am tired of being harassed like this. It needs to stop, you guys saw it just now, and if, I don't know how much time I have left, can I, can I please be told how much time I have left?
Well, you have a little bit less than a minute and a half, because I didn't start the timer on.
Well, the last thing I wanted to do was just read this, and then I'll be done, it should take less than a minute and a half. I want to read directly from the Louisiana Legislature website, and I'm gonna read RS, Louisiana statute RS forty-two twenty-three, regarding the sonic and video recordings and live broadcasts of meetings. All of the proceedings in a public meeting may be video or tape-recorded, filmed, or broadcast live. Louisiana auditor also says on his website, regarding the open meetings law, the public has a right to record these meetings. Can somebody please tell me why I was shut down? I didn't have my camera out like this, I was simply doing it for my family on my Facebook video, I was holding my camera like this, close to my body, not causing any kind of disruption, and I was doing what I'm illegally allowed to do. Why was I harassed tonight? Why is my name in a binder? I'm done, just, please, y'all do something about this, thank you.
Ed? To follow up on Ms. Alessandro's comments, she read section A, she failed to read section B. Section B says, "A public body shall establish standards for the use of lighting, recording, or broadcast equipment to ensure proper decorum in a public meeting," which means you have the right to set your rules. You all set the rules, as I believe that says no, no recording, or no phone recording, or no phones, or no phones, exactly, so, it is to keep decorum, and that is in line with what the law allows. Thank you. Please state your name.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty, East Loyola Drive, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor Zahn.
I'm not gonna answer every accusation, but when you slander my name on Facebook, I have to respond with some type of defense. So, you make the tabs in the binder when my name is slandered on Facebook, when lies and accusations are put out there about me, my administration, and a potential vendor, I will put tabs on a, in a Facebook, Facebook post in a binder to show that the attitude changes with, every day with a whim.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn. Please state your name.
You ready now? Al Morella, forty-two sixty, East Loyola Drive, fifth district, forty-eight years. First, I want to commend our fire department for that fire that broke out at Fisherman's Cove Saturday. I also want to thank the speakers that came down here at the last meeting to speak on behalf of our elementary school, Washington, and now we're gonna keep it open. That's our school, everybody who lives in this city, I don't care what part of the city you live in, so, I appreciate all of their comments, and it worked, we kept our school open. First of all, I want to respond to some comments by the mayor, you talked about, you say violia, I call it Viola Water. I've been calling it a sweetheart contract, because that's what it was, since it was turned into a long-term contract through, from a short-term contract, so I had a lot to say on that over the last twenty years. Also, I commended you all when you finally did away with that contract, so I want to say, I spoke on it on a regular basis. Okay, now, you say you're not terminating the contract with Romelli, you keeping him in here, you keeping him on with the city, along with Waste Four. It would seem to me, all of those complaints you got right there, man, and all those books, and all of the people that called in to the council members, you got, you got it recorded there, anyway, it would seem to me, why would in December, why would you grant them an increase in recycling when you got all of these complaints on file right here? Why would you want to keep a non-performing or underperforming company on the payroll? Why, why, I mean, why would you want to do that? Now, I want to direct this to Mr. Foshee, I want to direct this to you, Deborah?
Yes, sir.
If this winds up in court, I want to see those same checks presented to us on, on, on camera, as what the legal fees are costing the citizens of Kenner.
That would be to the legal department, but I understand what you're saying.
I want to see them, I want to see the figures, just like you showed us these figures here tonight. Far as me calling anybody about Romelli, I don't call this council for nothing. When I got something to say to y'all, it's always at this podium, that's how I deal with everybody here. Now, I want to say this to the media that's in here, Mr. Torres stood up here, and he disputed your column today, so tomorrow, I'm a subscriber, I get the paper every day, tomorrow I'm gonna be looking for a correction and clarification, if Mr. Torres is right what he's saying, I'll be looking for it, and if I don't get it, if I don't see anything, then it'll be continued at the next meeting, that's how I operate, okay?
Mr. Morella?
Okay, anybody, I'm gonna wait, man, I'm gonna give you an opportunity, anybody who wants to ask me any questions, I do that all the time. Anybody got any comments, any questions for me?
Mayor Zahn?
Yeah, just a quick response, I appreciate your support on violia, and just so you know, just so you know, that the million dollar, we'll, we'll save an estimated million dollars, you will not see it, it'll go back into wastewater, so don't be expecting a million dollars more in the budget, it'll go back into wastewater, but what it will do is, it'll free up a million dollars that we wouldn't have had to pay violia, so therefore, hopefully, that is some bricks and mortar projects that we can put out there, hopefully, that we can do with that million dollars saved. In answer to your question of why I asked for an amendment in December, I think I said this earlier, because the, some people were asking for recycling, so our contractor at the time, before tonight, was Romelli, so therefore, I went to this body and asked for it. If you listened really well earlier, I said, but the agreements, promises, commitments with the representative, with Mr. Romelli, with this council, three at a time, with me, have not been kept. So, you know, things change every day, Al, I'm sure on, you know, on the riverfront, things changed every day, you had to, you had to change your direction when you were working on the riverfront to make things work. My job, as things change here every day, and I'm, look, every day is really a stretch, as it changes every hour, I have to make those changes, and that's why I came back. This wasn't some, again, this wasn't some knee-jerk reaction that I said, let's, let's go do this, this has been a month, a little bit over a month, working on it. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you, Al, man.
Mr. Greg Teft?
My name is Greg Teft, I live at thirty-seven twenty West Loyola Drive, I'm calmed down now, so, okay. First of all, I just want to say, thank you for bringing a very good company in to take care of the trash in Kenner. Think about it this way, we've been talking about economic development, you know, one of the things that people look at is, what does it look like when they drive through the neighborhoods, what does it look like when they're driving on the interstate and you're in that part of Kenner? What you did today was bold, and I think it's going to, as Mr. Hayes said, it is going to be something that's going to show up down the road, it's going to show that the direction of Kenner was made tonight. The other thing that I think is even more compelling is the group that had to put together to lower the cost of flood insurance, because that's what's going to drive people to Kenner, because affordability is important, and as we all know, insurance, homeowners' insurance, flood insurance, is a big, big expense to everyone, and I, I thank y'all for that. And lastly, I just want to point out that with all the naysayers, or people that complain about the lack of business, I, me and my wife was driving down Williams Boulevard, and this was right after the, the fire at Harbor, you did not see one restaurant empty, they were packed. That's a good sign, that means people are spending money, and I think people need to see that, or drive down and look at that, because that means we do have resources, we're just not utilizing them. And as much as sometimes I don't like to agree with Councilman Branigan, he is right about one thing, we do need to spend our money in Kenner if we want Kenner to be able to grow and be the city that we want our children to have when we have passed. Thank you.
Mr. Teft, the reason all the restaurants were full is because Fisherman, Harbor Seafood was closed, and they passed.
No, no.
And they packed.
No, no, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, what was refreshing, because I, because I normally don't drive down Williams, what was refreshing was, you know, to see all the restaurants packed.
Yep.
And I, and to me, that struck a, you know, lit up a bulb that, hey, we do have services here that could serve the people, and people are taking advantage of them.
Thank you.
It goes back to what you brought up. They're spending their money here.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Jackie Brown, Cochrane. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Pastor Jackie Brown, Cochrane, twenty-six ten Decatur Street, apartment A. First, I'd like to say that we'd like, I'd like, along with the members of Veteran Heights Subdivision Neighborhood Civic Association, a thank you to Jill Johnson, Nelson Matthews, and Patricia Watson from Jefferson Parish Council Byron's Lee Office for support and information on our Monday night meeting, our March meeting. I'd also like to thank Public Works, I'm kind of sure it was Public Works, Road and Bridges, who actually straightened a sign at the end of Decatur Street on today, immediately after I asked them to do it. The stop sign has been leaning for a year, maybe about a year and a half, and they went out and they backed the truck up and took care of that for us. The other thing, I'm still passionate about having a fire station on the south side of Veterans Boulevard. We're still dealing with traffic, we're still dealing with problems that are occurring, and we can't get out of Twenty-seventh Street to Veterans, so it's going to be probably a problem for the fire trucks to get to us if something should happen. And Fisherman Cove was one of those examples, but of course, they had everything flowing toward them in that situation. Another thank you to the residents of Kenner, and our councilman, Greg Carroll, who did a fantastic job on yesterday regarding the save Washington Elementary School. We appreciate that. And FEMA. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, you say that there is money pending, grant money that's pending, or that we already have, to improve drainage in Kenner?
Yes, ma'am.
South Kenner, and that in, also in Lincoln Manor and University, South University City. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I also heard you say that South Kenner would have a 10% discount.
Do you want her to?
Oh, wait, wait, let, well, let me finish. South Kenner will have a 10% discount in their flood insurance, and North Kenner will have a 20 or 30% discount?
I'll, I'll correct you.
Okay, all right. Even though South Kenner has a higher elevation than North Kenner, so why would we have less of a discount? So, I just want to thank you for the time and for responding to my, my questions, my concerns. Thank you.
It's not separated by North and South Kenner for the discount, it's actually based on your flood zone. X, as well as AE, are both in North and South. It is not separated by a road, the interstate, or anything. It's actually based on the elevation, and FEMA makes that determination. And I'll give Ms. Brown more information. Does that satisfy the question? Okay.
All right, Madam Blurt. That completes it. Motion to adjourn. Over.
Nobody else can sign it.